Well, thank you all. I invite you all to come in, make sure you have your salmon-colored warrant booklets. There's a supplemental report at the Advisory Committee available in the room tonight. There's a three-page succinct executive summary of the work of the Electronic Voting Committee. And by the sound of the gavel, it's clear that we have a quorum present, and the 2015 Annual Town Meeting of the Town of Hingham is hereby called to order. One of our traditions is to have a member of our local clergy begin the session with an invocation, and I invite Stephanie Kelch, pastor of Second Parish Church, to come forward and give that invocation. Pastor Kelch.
Good evening. Let us bow our heads in prayer. Spirit of life held in many different hearts, known by many different names. We gather this evening, charged with exercising the privileges and fulfilling the responsibilities of participants in an open town meeting. In doing so, we participate in a centuries-old tradition that endures and works thanks to deep commitment and care for our town. May we be grateful for all the preparation that has gone into tonight's meeting, for the work of town officials, employees, volunteers on committees, and so many involved citizens, work that has led us to this time of open discussion and debate. As we discuss and debate and decide, may we remember that we are all neighbors, that we all live here. Let that awareness help us to listen with respect, to speak with clarity, and to reason with compassion, so that our work this evening might be an honor to those who have gone before, a model for those who will come after, and a contribution to the core values and vision we share for Hingham. May it be so. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Kelch. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance, and I ask you all to please stand.
Aye, what allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you who did not recognize that voice from Somalia, our veteran service agent. Okay. Well, had we made the connection, you would have heard a voice from Somalia. So, next, I'd ask our town clerk to read the call of the meeting.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts Plymouth SS, to the Constable of the Town of Hingham in the County of Plymouth. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Hingham qualified to vote in town affairs to meet at the high school, Seventeen Union Street in said Hingham, Monday, the 27th day of April 2015, at 7:00 in the evening, then and there to act on the following articles, 1 through 37. Given under our hands at Hingham on the 26th day of March in the year of the law 2015, Irma H. Lauder, Paul K. Healy, Paul J. Gannon, selectmen of Hingham. By virtue of this within warrant, I hereby certify that I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the Town of Hingham qualified to vote in town affairs to meet at the time and place indicated in the warrant by causing an attested copy thereof to be published in the Hingham Journal seven days at least before the day appointed for said meeting. It was presented to and posted by the town clerk in the Town of Hingham on this date, March 30th, 2015, Kathleen A. Pellican, Constable of Hingham.
Thank you, Mrs. McCracken. The meeting appears to be properly and duly called. As I said earlier, there is available this evening in the room here the booklet that contains the warrant for this meeting, as well as the report and recommendations of the Advisory Committee, and the reports of the Board of Selectmen, the Capital Outlay Committee, the Personnel Board, and the School Department. There is also a supplemental report of the Advisory Committee which will aid you in participating in the business before us. I have, as is our tradition, of course, appointed citizens of the town to serve as tellers in case we have a standing vote, and also to assist in any ballot votes. Also, consistent with our tradition, I have admitted to the meeting a number of guests. We, of course, are delighted to have them with us tonight. They are not allowed to vote on any matters before the meeting. I would like at this moment to make a couple of announcements. First, as you came in this evening, you saw that Mass Memories has selected the Town of Hingham to participate in the Massachusetts Memories Roadshow. It's a great honor for the town and also an opportunity to build a database for the town. It will take place on Sunday, May 17th, from 10:00 in the morning until 3:00 in the afternoon, and that's all laid out, not only in the colorful flyer that was given out as you entered the room tonight, or the building tonight, but also is available on the town website. There's also another matter of great honor to the town. The town has made it from a very large group of communities and businesses being considered for the Freedom Award by the Department of Defense of the United States Government. Our interim veteran service officer, Jamie Litchfield, and his assistant, the Administrator Lisa Potts, have worked with the guidance, of course, of Keith German and the hard work of Ted Alexiades. The community, our community, has recently received word that the group of 30 has now been winnowed down, strike that, the group has been winnowed down to 30, and from those 30 finalists, 15 will be selected as winners of this coveted and appropriate honor in June at a ceremony in Washington, DC. Other finalists slightly larger than we include the State of Wisconsin, T-Mobile, CVS, and the mouse, Walt Disney. There is also another passing of the baton, or the gavel, as the case may be. It would not be appropriate to have this meeting begin without recognizing the extraordinary work and service that has been given to the town and to this institution of town meeting by Betty Foley, our Assistant Town Administrator. You can't stand up for your own people. She's obviously never had a standing ovation before. Betty has served as Assistant Town Administrator since 1991, and as my predecessor, Tom O'Donnell, and I can attest, this meeting, the grace with which it is carried on, and the flawlessness that we've come to expect is largely attributable to people who are not up here with a microphone and a properly wound this year stopwatch. But to the folks, whether it's Betty, or Betty Tower, or Eileen McCracken, and others who really make this go, Steve Becker, Kate Richardson, we have an extraordinary group of employees and colleagues in the town, and we will greatly miss this particular one to my left, to your right. I was making mention of guests. We have a special guest with us tonight. Our Congressman, Stephen Lynch, has made himself able to be with us tonight. Now, Congressman Lynch is probably used to going to the microphone and expecting, "Of course, I get to speak." But we know that Congressman Lynch is not a Hingham resident, and our tradition is, as a guest of the meeting, it requires a majority vote of the meeting for a non-resident to address the meeting. So, all those who wish to hear Congressman Lynch speak, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The majority appears to have it. You have six minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I know from that vote that my wife is not out there. She would have been the one aye, I think. Mr. Moderator, thank you so much for your kindness. My colleagues in government, members of town meeting, it's great to be with you. Normally, on Monday nights, I'm in Washington, DC, but by happenstance, they postponed the votes until tomorrow night, so I have a wonderful opportunity to be with you, and I realize you've got 37 items on the warrant, so I will be brief. Again, I want to thank Mike for his kindness, and I promised him that I would be brief. There has been some movement down in DC in recent weeks that I think is commendable. We've had three successive major bills passed with bipartisan support between Republicans and Democrats. We passed the Department of Homeland Security Compromise Bill. It was a result of working across the aisle, amendments by Democrats to the bill that was presented by Republicans, the way it should work. The Amtrak Authorization is a five-year bill. Very difficult to get it passed in previous years, but again, that bill also passed with a little bit of work, but some compromise on both sides. And then, most importantly, the Medicare-Medicaid Protection Act. We used to have a battle every single year about the so-called Doc Fix, but between the Republican and Democratic leadership, we worked that through and actually improved the bill greatly from previous years, so I have great hope. Where coming up now, Congress, this week, we're looking at the beginning of the appropriations process. We have a budget vote, and then we have 16 appropriations bills that we have to pass before October. Now, it sounds like plenty of time, but generally, it's a point of contention each and every bill. The bills this week are the Military Construction Bill and VA, that's in one single appropriations bill, and then the Water and Sewer Appropriation Bill that will come up directly after that. I'm very pleased that we are attacking the appropriations process pretty early. We also may consider a budget conference report, which would be the first joint budget resolution passed since 2010. One of the other bills that's coming up quite quickly is the so-called Fast Track Bill. It's a, it's a, Fast Track is a special procedure. I'm not very fond of it, but it allows Trade Promotion Authority to be given to the president to allow him to put a trade bill together, in this case, the Trans-Pacific Partnership with 11 other countries, and then present it to Congress without the opportunity to amend that. And the bill is basically negotiated pretty much in secret and provides a very short window of time for members of Congress to actually read the bill, understand what's in it, and then decide whether to favor it or to vote against it. The problem is that it's a fairly complex bill, and it involves the countries of Australia, Japan, Mexico, Canada, New Zealand, Peru, Brunei, Malaysia, Singapore, and Vietnam. Those are very, very diverse and disparate countries. Canada, being a strong ally, a democratic country, and Vietnam, a communist country with very low protection for workers and in the environment. So, you've got a very disparate interest there. And so, I oppose, I am currently opposing Fast Track. I'll oppose it when it comes to the floor, because I think that your representatives should be involved in that discussion, and the American people should have all the information that they need to decide whether that bill should be supported or not. So, that's a fight that's coming up. Let's see. We also have a transportation funding bill. Very important to the governor and to mayors and town administrators to have a long-term transportation bill that you can actually rely upon over a number of years. Lately, we've been doing very short-term, one-year extensions, and that doesn't give mayors or governors the opportunity to really plan ahead with some of the major transportation projects. Recently, I appeared before FEMA, the Federal Emergency Administration, and myself and Governor Baker testified on behalf of some relief from this past winter, the huge amounts of snow removal that were necessary here and across the Commonwealth. A number of other members from the Massachusetts delegation testified as well. FEMA's decision was not favorable. It's not what we were looking for, but we have entered the appeal process, and we have received assurances from them that they will be generous in terms of their policy decisions going forward. But it's still not where it needs to be. So, I know there are a lot of towns that spent right through their snow removal money, as Hingham did, and probably every single town in the Commonwealth. So, we're looking for the same treatment that Buffalo, New York, received in prior years with the same problem, where you had a month's worth of snow, and they only consider the first storm, the first 72 hours. That's what they reimburse you for. And we're saying that that storm continued, and the temperatures never got above freezing for basically 29 days. And we had 104 inches within that 29 days. One of the great things I get to do as a United States Congressman is to appoint young people to the military academies, West Point, Annapolis, the Air Force Academy at Colorado Springs. And I'm very pleased to report tonight, this is my first appointee from the Town of Hingham, Benjamin Maud. His parents are Michael and Anna Maud at 214 Leavitt Street, not too far from here. He's a graduate of Zavarian Brothers High School. He's recently been appointed to the U.S. Military Academy, class of 2019, and since he was just appointed, he'll report for duty on July 1st. And he's probably doing push-ups and sit-ups as we speak. It is really, this is a very, very competitive process. Since 2001, since 9/11, 2001, the applications to the military academies from across the country, and especially from my district, have just been through the roof. So, for a young man from Hingham to get this far and to be so highly regarded by West Point is a real credit to the Town of Hingham, to his parents, but also to the coaches and to the families of Hingham as well. You should be very, very proud. And lastly, the Department of Defense has informed me as well that Hingham is up for the Freedom Award, which is a very, very special award. It's a very select group of communities and entities within the United States that are recognized because of the patriotism of their citizens. And in this case, one of our foremost advocates in that regard is Keith German, who's our regular veterans agent here, but he is currently on sabbatical in Somalia. As a matter of fact, by the end of the month, I might be in that same neighborhood. I can't say too much, but I will be sure to give him your best. I have the wonderful, wonderful honor of representing you in the United States Congress. I don't forget for one minute what your expectations are of your United States Congressman. And I just want to say what an honor it is to go to Washington each week and to represent the Town of Hingham in the United States Congress. God bless the Town of Hingham. Thank you for being involved in town meeting. This is where it all starts. This is what it's all about. This is really, this is really democracy at its essence. And God bless these United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman Lynch, and thank you to Catherine Shea, his assistant, who is with us tonight also as a guest. On behalf of all of the citizens of Hingham, I thank Hingham Community Access Media for providing the closed-circuit television coverage for this year's meeting. The meeting is also being recorded for later broadcast on the local access cable channels. Of course, there is no smoking allowed anywhere in the building. I'd also ask you to take a moment to locate the emergency exit nearest you. Also, if you've not done so already, please, please, turn off your cell phones, other things that make unexpected noises. Please refrain from using those phones and texting unless there is an emergency or compelling reason to do so. We've got a town election coming up, the details of which are set forth on page 57 of your warrant booklet, but let me just abstract them quickly for you. The election is Saturday, May 2nd. Precincts 1, 2, 3, and 4 here at the high school, precincts 5 and 6 at the middle school, precinct 5A at Linden Ponds in the Oak Leaf Clubhouse. The hours for voting will be from 8:00 in the morning until 8:00 in the evening, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Mrs. McCracken has asked me to pass along the following information to those of you who may be unable to vote during the polling hours on May 2nd, but who could come to vote at Town Hall before that day. A person who will be unable to vote during polling hours on Saturday, May 2, may vote at the town clerk's office during regular business hours any day before May 2, but not later than noon on May 1. That's in your booklet, if you didn't quite follow that. I call your attention as well to the Talent Bank Application Form. It is critically located at the end of the booklet, which contains the warrant at page 77. As we know, this town runs on volunteerism. It is essential to the good functioning of the Town of Hingham that capable and able citizens turn out, as you do again and again, to volunteer for service on the many appointed town committees. The selectmen and the moderator always welcome volunteers for these critical committees. If you are interested in serving, if you're interested in thinking about serving, please fill out a Talent Bank application and either drop it in the box cleverly marked "Talent Bank Applications" in the back of the hall, or you can return it to the selectmen's office at any time. The selectmen and the moderator will meet with those who wish to give service to the town. Those sessions typically take place in May and June and are held at Town Hall. The dates are publicized well in advance, both on the town's website and in the Hingham Journal. I'd like now to introduce the people who are on the platform up here, beginning to my far right, to your left, Paul Gannon, selectman, Selectman Paul Healy, our town clerk, Eileen McCracken, our late lamented Assistant Town Administrator, Betty Foley. To Betty's left, your right, Selectman Chair Irma Lauder, our Town Administrator, Ted Alexiades. Sitting over there in the 15-member jury box, the members of the Advisory Committee, the committee that works tirelessly throughout the year to bring us to where we are. And then way over there, we have someone who's taking notes and serving to provide a transcript. And then Susan Murphy, our real estate counsel. And to Susan's left, John Coughlin, who serves as town council. I would like now to give the floor to our Selectman Chair, Irma Lauder. We traditionally, at this time, remember certain town officials and employees who have passed on since we were gathered here last year for town meeting in 2014.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Let us remember the following deceased members and retirees who have passed since April of 2014. Wayne Dennis, Charles Granger, Irene Henningson, Ellen Prusick, Barbara Ratray, Kathleen Reichert, Joseph Shaughnessy, Peter Tutkus, Anna Lane Waugh.
Thank you, Mrs. Lauder. Next, I call your attention to the moderator's message. It's set forth on pages 3 and 4 of your warrant booklet. There, we have summarized some of the town bylaws and other procedures that are followed in the conduct of the Hingham Town Meeting. I'd like to just emphasize a few of them. First, one of those vexing issues we face every year, just to clarify, what's an article and what's a motion? An article in the warrant, as the first bullet says, states a question. So, your article is, "Will the town do X, or should the town do Y?" So, that is a question that is being posed to this legislative body that is town meeting and asking you, inviting you, calling upon you to answer that question. A motion is essentially the proposed answer to the question. As one would expect, the proposed answer needs to be responsive to the question. Moderators call that scope. So, the motion needs to be within the scope of the article. Articles, once they're put forth in the warrant, may not be amended. Motions can, we're familiar with that. Motions need to be seconded. That's the essential difference between an article and a motion. We remind people that motions and proposed amendments to motions that involve the expenditure of money need to be in writing. We also expect that other motions and proposed amendments will be written unless they're so brief and simple that they can be understood easily. One thing that we never have a problem with is speakers indulging in personalities. That's part of the gift of this town meeting, but we invite you always to confine your remarks to the matter before the meeting. There are a few other points of protocol that are worth emphasizing. All votes are taken in the first instance by voice vote. If I am in doubt as to the results, or if seven voters should rise and express doubt as to the result that I have declared, then a standing vote is taken. Except that a ballot vote is taken in lieu of a standing vote if either the Advisory Committee or 50 voters promptly call for a ballot vote. As you all know, a ballot vote takes considerable time, and accordingly, our practice has not been to request a ballot vote in the absence of compelling reasons to do so. Please note that unless you are a congressman, you have six minutes to speak the first time. Until my knowledge, only Congressman Lynch is here. And three minutes to speak the second time. I will remind you when you have one minute remaining, and you should conclude your remarks promptly when I tell you that your time has expired. Please remember, if you desire to speak, please rise, seek my attention, and when recognized by the moderator, come to the nearest microphone. Please be certain that you speak directly into the microphone so that your comments can be heard clearly by all. Please state your name and your address at the outset of your remarks each time you speak. Unless there is something else, we are going to go to Article 1. Article 1. Article 1 asks the town to choose necessary officers other than those elected by ballot, including, it is recommended that Laurel H. Cosman, 16 Queen Anne Lane, be elected a member of the committee to serve with the Hannah Lincoln Whiting Fund and to have charge of the income of that fund for a three-year term, and that Pauline Monroe, 16 Pilgrim Road, be elected a member of the committee to have charge of the income of the Hannah Lincoln Whiting Fund to fill an unexpired one-year term. That recommended motion is the motion of the Advisory Committee, is their discussion. If none, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it, it is a unanimous vote, the motion is adopted. Article 2. Article 2 is an article that we see each year. It's obligatory that it be adopted. It questions whether the town will assume liability in the manner provided by General Laws, Chapter 91, Section 29, "For all damages that may be incurred by work to be performed by the Department of Conservation and Recreation of the Commonwealth for the improvement, development, maintenance, and protection of certain waters, rivers, and streams." As the comment makes clear, the DCR, as a matter of policy, requires the town to assume liability if it is to perform any type of this work within the Town of Hingham. The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is set forth in your booklets. It is an affirmative motion that the town assume liability for all damages that may be incurred by the referenced work, and that the Board of Selectmen be authorized to execute and deliver a bond of indemnity to the Commonwealth, assuming that liability. That is, the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is their discussion. If none, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote, the motion is adopted. Article 3. Article 3 asks this meeting to hear the reports, to essentially receive reports of the... the reference committees, these are committees that are established by the meeting, and that the reports of the reference committees be received, and that all of these committees and bodies and posts of government be continued, except that the Electronic Voting Study Committee, from which we will hear later, be discharged with our thanks. That is the recommended motion of the advisory committee, is their discussion. If none, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote, the motion is adopted. Article Four. Article Four asks us to hear the report of the Personnel Board, appointed under the Classification and Salary Plan. The recommended motion of the advisory committee is set forth, that the report of the Personnel Board be accepted, and that the amendments of the Personnel Bylaw, which includes the Classification and Salary Plan, and any agreements reached by the Personnel Board in collective bargaining which may be embodied or referred to in that report, be approved and adopted in their entirety, such approval and adoption to become effective July 1, 2015, or as otherwise specified in that report or agreements, and that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $476,816 for the purpose of this vote. The balance of the recommended motion, of course, is stated in full, is their discussion. If not, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote, the motion is adopted. Article Five. Article Five asks, "Will the town fix certain salaries of the following town officers, selectmen, assessors, town clerk, municipal light board?" That is more or less one we see each year. The recommended motion of advisory is set forth in your booklets, that the selectmen receive a compensation of $2,000 each, except the chair receives $2,500, assessors $1,800, chair $2,000. The town clerk, of course, is compensated in accordance with the compensation rate for grade fifteen of the bylaw that we just spoke about, and the municipal light board at the rate of $214 each. And then, as a proviso, that the salary of each such officer, except selectmen, assessor, and municipal light board member, be reduced by all retirement allowances and pensions received by that officer from the town of Hingham. The recommended motion of the advisory committee is what I have just abstracted, is their discussion. If not, we come to vote. All those in favor of the recommended motion under Article Five, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It too is a unanimous vote. We now come to Article Six. Article Six is the bulk of our budget. The recommended motion of the advisory committee is set forth in your warrant booklets, beginning at page twenty. The introductory portion of the motion refers to appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, the 2016 fiscal year. You will find, beginning at page twenty-one, a series of pages running through page twenty-six. Each of these contains three columns of numbers. The far right-hand column has the specific appropriation recommended by your advisory committee for fiscal 2016, which begins on July 1, 2015, and will end on June 30, 2016. With respect to the items under Article Six, as we have done for many years, I will read each amount to be appropriated for the fiscal year as recommended in each case by the advisory committee. If you would like to raise a question or an objection with regard to any specific item, or if you would like to propose a higher amount, or a lower amount, or no amount at all, then, after I have read the item and the dollar amount, please say "hold" so that we'll hear you. Then I will mark "hold" next to the held item in my book. We'll put the held items aside until we have completed the reading of the entire list, at which point we will take up the items that have not been held, as to which no question has been raised, and we will vote on those items altogether. Then we will go back and take up any item that has been held, one by one, and allow discussion, question, and debate, and any alternative motions with regard to any of the held items. So, let us start on page twenty-one, and I will read each line item and the recommended amount. I note under Article Six that it will not be considered final as to require a two-thirds vote for reconsideration or any other procedure applicable to reconsideration until all action under Article Six has been completed. So, we now come to the budget. Article Six asks, "Will the town raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds sums of money to defray the expenses of the town for the twelve-month period..." Got it. "...beginning July 1, 2015, or act on anything relating thereto." We will begin now to hear from our advisory chair, Mary Power, who will give an introduction to Article Six. Mrs. Power.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mary Power, One King Philip Path, Chair of the Advisory Committee. Good evening. This is the portion of the meeting when we begin to look at the numbers. It seems fitting to begin with the number 110, which is the number of inches of snow that fell in Hingham this past winter. To start, we must thank our employees in Hingham Light for their hard work and dedicated service to the town. And on behalf of the advisory committee, we thank our town government colleagues for their perseverance in meeting our collective responsibility to this town meeting. Tonight, I'd like to begin with an update on the current fiscal year. Our town's strong financial position has enabled us to, pardon the pun, weather the impact of this winter. The record-setting snowfall resulted in record-setting costs for our snow and ice budget. We spent nearly $2 million removing snow from our roads. That's about four times greater than what was budgeted, and we also incurred other unbudgeted winter-related costs. For this reason, you will be asked to approve Article Thirteen, a request to transfer $1.6 million from unassigned fund balance, our town's rainy day fund, to the reserve fund. Passage of Article Thirteen will ensure the town has the necessary funds available to pay our bills and to close our books with a balanced budget. As difficult as it is to take $1.6 million from fund balance, we need to remember that this is why it exists. Fund balance gives us the ability to pay for extraordinary events versus having to reduce services or ask you for more money. Even after this transfer, our rainy day fund balance will still fall within the range set forth in our town financial policy. There is also the potential for operating budget surpluses, and as Congressman Lynch mentioned, federal reimbursements to offset some of these costs. We won't know that for another few months, which is why we're asking to transfer the funds this evening. Now to the upcoming year. This evening's budget you will consider marks a milestone. Total sources and uses of funds for the 2016 fiscal year exceed $100 million. The resulting impact of the proposed budget will result in an increase of approximately 2.1% or $170 to the average homeowner. The budget includes contractual salary increases and funds scheduled contributions for current and future retirees. It recommends $2.3 million in capital outlay, within the range recommended in our financial policy. It applies just over $1 million in meals tax revenue to reduce the tax levy for the upcoming year. That represents $114 in tax relief for the average assessed value home. As previously mentioned, our taxes will increase next year, but the increase will be less than it could have been. The budget also reflects a policy decision to refinance approximately $43 million of short-term debt into long-term debt at an expected rate of 2.5%. This rate demonstrates one of the benefits of being a AAA-rated community. The budget contains 3/4 of a million dollars in new services, half in municipal departments, half in school departments. A major factor guiding our budget recommendations is our revenue forecast. Over the past five years, revenues have increased by approximately 4%. Looking forward, we are currently estimating that state aid will be flat for the next few years, and based on what's in our development pipeline, we're forecasting fewer new growth dollars. As a result, our forecasted revenue growth is expected to be less than 3% for the next few years. Advisory factored this forecast into our recommendations for this year, and it's worth noting that we did say no to several worthy initiatives. In addition to the budget, you will consider several articles this evening that request funding. These articles will help us take care of our infrastructure, get us in the queue for state funding to address roadway safety at the harbor, allow us to better manage unbudgeted special education expenses, preserve important parts of our town history, and, as you've already heard, reduce your tax bill for next year. Once again, we looked carefully at each of these requests, particularly in light of our unusually high winter expenses. We also considered their impact on our town financial policy. In summary, we believe the warrant and budget articles being put forth to you this evening strike an appropriate balance between the delivery of quality services, the need to invest in our infrastructure, the importance of preserving our AAA bond rating, and the impact on all of us as taxpayers. Our collective opinion, which is supported by the Board of Selectmen, is that they are worthy of town meeting approval. Thank you.
The recommended motion of advisory is that the town raise and appropriate for each of the following purposes for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, the sum of money stated therefore, provided that where a transfer appropriation is stated, the amount so indicated shall be transferred or specifically appropriated as stated, also that the authority is hereby given to turn-in vehicles and equipment in partial payment for vehicles and equipment purchased in those cases where a turn-in is stated, and provided that any amount or portion thereof appropriated to a sub-account and included in a numbered account as set forth below may be transferred to another sub-account under the same numbered account with the approval of the Board of Selectmen and the advisory committee. Selectmen: Payroll, $458,173. Expenses, $33,590. Capital outlay, $24,295. Reserve fund, $550,000. Town accountant: Payroll, $371,381. Expenses, $12,555. Capital outlay, $210,500. Audit, $55,000. Information technology, $204,755. Assessors: Payroll, $229,746. Expenses, $11,587. Consulting, $67,000. Map maintenance, $6,000. Treasurer-collector: Payroll, $323,898. Expenses, $44,808. Tax titles, $10,000. Legal services, $232,000. Town meetings: Payroll, $2692. Expenses, $27,300. Town clerk: Payroll, $178,822. Expenses, $7866. Elections: Payroll, $12,150. Expenses, $14,795. Community planning: Payroll, $714,978. Expenses, $57,885. Bear Cove Park: Payroll, $16,954. Expenses, $7833. Town hall: Payroll, $218,653. Expenses, $426,776. Capital outlay, $60,185. Grand Army Memorial Hall: Expenses, $14,846. Capital outlay, $5,000. Police department: Payroll, including overtime, of $451,378. Expenses, $346,550. Capital outlay, $130,571,000 from mooring permits. Fire department: $4,577,186, including overtime, of $404,105. Expenses, $403,258. Capital outlay, $123,000. Dispatch services: Expenses, $813,750. Animal control: $52,384. Expenses, $4,300. Harbor master: Payroll, $151,700. Expenses, $55,250. Public safety utilities: Emergency water, $364,424. Street lighting: $183,274. School department: Payroll, $37,239,250. Expenses, $8,174,470. Capital outlay, $988,480. Total education: $46,402,200. Town engineering: Payroll, $237,848. Expenses, $35,475. Road building and construction: $300,000. Highway, recreation, tree and park: Payroll, $1,967,668. Overtime, $54,412. Expenses, $434,897. Capital outlay, $404,500, $325,000 for excess overlay. Snow removal, $504,325. Road maintenance: $303,246. Landfill recycling: $490,356, including overtime, of $24,057. Expenses, $861,946. Capital outlay, $117,000. Sewer commission: Payroll, $314,966. Overtime, $22,586. Expenses, $269,278. Capital outlay, $159,000. Engineering, $10,000. MWRA charges, $1,688,876. The hall inter-municipal agreement, $161,086. The sum of $2,603,206 shall be funded from sewer revenue. Health department: Payroll, $303,923. Expenses, $20,285. Elder services: Payroll, $203,333. Expenses, $21,558. Tax work-off program, $60,000. Veteran services: Payroll, $89,762. Expenses, $5,779. Benefits, $282,733. Health imperatives, $2700. South Shore Women's Center, $3700. Library: Payroll, $1,298,890. Expenses, $314,682. Capital outlay, $105,000. Recreation commission: $89,681. Trustees of the Bathing Beach: Payroll, $17,727. Expenses, $22,145. Celebrations: $11,210. Country club: $2,231,877. That same sum shall be funded from country club revenue. Debt service: $9,661,182. $4,786,120 is excluded from Proposition Two and a Half. Group insurance: $6,429,881. Other post-employment benefits: $880,732. Contributory retirement: $3,839,17. Workers' comp: $300,000. Unemployment: $30,000. Mandatory Medicare: $675,000. Property and liability insurance, fire, public liability, property damage, et cetera: $550,000. Claims and incidentals: $10,950,000. Oh, sorry, $10 million, wow. That's gone up a lot. This is power fail to warn you about that. $10,950. Thank you. So, we had a hold on Item 240, dispatch services. We had no other holds, to my knowledge. So now we come to vote on all of the items that have not been held, essentially all items ex dispatch services. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. We have a unanimous vote on those items, and now we will have discussion on dispatch And I believe we're going to hear from Mr. McCune from the Advisory Committee on behalf of the majority voice of that committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Greg McCune. I live at Twenty Stage Coach Road.
With my close break?
Sure. My name is Greg McCune. I live at Twenty Stage Coach Road. I'm speaking on behalf of the majority of the Advisory Committee in support of the recommended public safety dispatch budget. Fiscal year 2011, the last full year before the Regional Dispatch Center was established, the expenditures for dispatch totaled $423,000. The fiscal year 2016 budget before us tonight calls for approximately $814,000 to be spent on dispatch. While that is a remarkable increase, it does not tell a false story. In order to make the amounts truly comparable, we would first need to add approximately 15 to 20 percent to the 2011 budget to account for employee benefits and then adjust upward for five years of salary increases. We would then need to adjust the current proposed budget downward to reflect the rent, maintenance, and accounting fees that the Regional Dispatch Center pays to the town of Hingham for the space occupied and the services rendered. Based on these adjustments, I would suggest that the real increase in cost is more likely $150,000 to $200,000. Still a significant amount of money and certainly not consistent with the expectations for cost savings we had six years ago when the Regional Dispatch Center was first proposed to the town. However, what's not included in these amounts is the millions of dollars that the town has received in state grants to update the dispatch facility and provide new equipment and training to our police and fire departments, money that would not have been available to the town had we not been part of a regional dispatch operation. As a result, today we have a state-of-the-art facility and our first responders are better prepared to fulfill their critical responsibilities. Yes, there have been challenges, including the fact that one of the five towns originally scheduled to participate has yet to come on board. And the integration of the Regional Dispatch has not been without difficulty, and there is certainly opportunity for enhanced oversight and greater fiscal accountability. It is tempting to focus on the negative, and it is difficult to measure the successes, including those instances when emergency response was enhanced by the resources now available to us. But I believe I speak for the chief of police, the fire chief, as well as the town administrator when I tell you that overall, the reorganization, excuse me, the regionalization of dispatch has been successful. When you call 911, you have every right to expect that the help you need will be there as soon as possible. Of all the services the town government provides, none is more important than public safety dispatch. Accordingly, we on the Advisory Committee, together with the Board of Selectmen, the town administrator, the fire chief, and the police chief and their successors, are committed to ensuring that the dispatch center is properly managed and adequately funded. To that end, I respectfully ask that you support the budget we have recommended. Thank you.
Mr. Sharkansky for the minority voice of the Advisory Committee.
James Sharkansky, 32 Hancock Road, speaking for the minority of the Advisory Committee. Thank you. It's a privilege to speak before you tonight. I would like to read to you an article from the 2009 town meeting warrant that was passed, Article 45 at that time. Will the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into an inter-municipal agreement or petition the great general court to enact special legislation establishing a regional dispatch center or district or act on anything relating thereto? The comment read as thus: "The Regional Dispatch Committee, the committee comprised of town officials and the police, of fire chiefs from all four towns, has analyzed the operations of each town's E911 dispatch center and found that significant operation efficiencies and cost savings would be achieved by merging the four dispatch centers into a single E911 center. The committee further found that the Hingham's current town hall, with certain modifications, would most readily accommodate the merged centers." The comment goes on further to state, "A regional dispatch center would also allow four towns to obtain a higher level of interoperability for the police and fire department, strengthening the mutual aid network, enhancing coordination of police and fire departments through a centralized communication center, and promote better coordination and information sharing as police and fire personnel respond to emergencies in the four-town service area. Furthermore, after reviewing the costs of emergency dispatch services in each of the four towns, the committee concluded that the regional dispatch center would yield substantial cost savings to each town. Please note that the communities currently participating in this regional area are Hingham, Hall, Cohasset, and Norwell. In 2011, Hingham's dispatch expenses were approximately $423,000. This year, the budget proposal is $814,000. That's an increase of 93 percent since 2011. Most of these increases come from the increased operational costs of the new dispatch center. However, even in the last two years, where the increases have been modest compared to the other past years, they've run about 5 percent over. This is greater than the 2.5 percent tax levy for the town of Hingham. Please don't misunderstand me. I am very much in favor of Hingham having great safety services. I believe that it's incumbent on this town's government to apply taxpayers' dollars to basic necessities such as safety through the fire and police, sanitation with health department and waste disposal, proper development, building and zoning regulations, maintenance of the roads through the DPW, and of course, education. When these services are adequately funded, there may be opportunities for, with the permission of the taxpayer, to spend tax dollars on other services. However, I believe that Hingham provides a level of service that is more than adequate in these areas. Of course, there will always be room for improvement and/or other efficiencies. However, I draw attention to the amount of money being spent on the dispatch center and the rate of increase of this budget, particularly since it was positioned as a cost-savings initiative. This has not happened. I understand savings may occur when other communities join this system. However, aside from the four in the current communities involved, there have not been any other, joined from any other communities. These additional costs thus have not been materialized. In addition to the significant increase of costs, the system has come into question, in particular in February 2013, the shift commanders of the Hingham Fire Department put their concerns in writing to the town government and demanded that be addressed. At this point, there's no alternative in the short term. To not fund or under-fund this budget is to compromise safety. What we as a town have to decide is whether the budget is sustainable. To better understand the question, I recommend that we, in all participating communities, receive a five-year forecast of expenses. This would help us plan for the future. I would like you to know that I am speaking for myself. I take responsibility as a member of the Advisory Committee seriously and carefully analyze the questions of every budget that comes before me. I carefully consider why these funds are being spent in the best way for our community, excuse me, and how it affects each of us as a taxpayer. Let me conclude my remarks with two recommendations for the leadership of this consideration. I respect your work on behalf of the citizens of this town. I believe that you always put the town ahead of your own, and so I ask that these stop by the beginning of the new fiscal year. First, designate a member of the Board of Selectmen to be a liaison to this budget, primarily responsible to the voters of this town for managing the expenses and costs of the dispatch center. And two, on a quarterly basis, obtain and to be reviewed by the Board of Selectmen and provided to the Advisory Committee a statement of expenses for the dispatch services so that we have full transparency with this difficult and expensive situation. I cast a no vote for this budget to express my concern for the escalation of our dispatch costs and as we, to urge the town to take these measures to more aggressively manage them going forward. Thank you again, thank you again for your time.
Thank you, and good evening. Mark Duff, 37 Bradley Park Drive, Fire Chief. It was an order here earlier tonight that a wise man once said, "It's much easier to measure a negative than it is to measure a positive." And I think that's the case with our four-town dispatch center, otherwise known as the Shrek, South Shore Regional Emergency Communications Center. Not a day goes by that between the four communities a success story could be told that more than likely would not have happened if we did not have our current combined dispatch center. The current dispatch center does dispatch for fire and police, Hingham, Hall, Cohasset, and Norwell, and there is room for additional communities to join. When a perceived mistake is made, we always tend to hear about it. The previous 100 success stories that have come out of this project never get told. Many times blame is placed on the Shrek where it does not belong in the Shrek. Collectively, the towns, the four towns, have received almost $10 million in grants. $10 million. Hingham alone was looking at a $2 million plus upgrade of the then-current dispatch facility when it was located at the police station. All of this funded by Hingham taxpayers. We needed new consoles, radios, software, an expansion of the senator to allow for three dispatch positions rather than two. That did not include additional staffing that we were very much in need of. At times during the night, there was one dispatcher that would dispatch both the fire department and the police department. That's not acceptable. Was not acceptable then, it's not acceptable now. So what have we gained by the new dispatch center? One thing, main thing, emergency medical dispatch. When you call 911, and hopefully you never will have to do that, for a medical emergency, but when you call 911, a dispatcher stays on the line with you until a firefighter or a police officer or a paramedic arrives at your house to take over medical care. They give advice on CPR if it's necessary, control of bleeding, immobilization, whatever is needed. With this new dispatcher, and this is required by law, by the way, and was not being done as it should have been, but when you call the fire department, call 911 now, your medical advice and your medical care starts with that phone call. Significant improvements in handling multiple calls. Portable radio funding, of which the portals have not been purchased yet. Upgrade of dispatch software, badly needed, and now all four towns are using the same dispatch software. Fire reporting software upgrades, badly needed. Improving mapping systems, especially for hydrants, and I don't have to tell you how important that was this winter, when we had 500 hydrants that were under four feet of snow. Mobile data terminals now, which were allowed in the police cruisers, will now be installed in fire apparatus, allowing fire officers and fire department members to have much better information when responding to a call. Multiple operators on duty, so when things get busy in one or more towns, they're much more apt to and able to handle calls. Building collapses. Building collapses occurred at any time in the four communities over the winter. Prime example, right here in our own town, is when we had a major building collapse in Hingham Square and one, and a building collapse in the shipyard. With four or five operators on duty, they were able to handle all those issues flawlessly, make all the notifications that we needed, keep our fire and police officers safe, our public safety people safe, and yet continue to operate the workload of all the other calls that came in in fire police in a normal day of operations period. Dispatching of mutual aid apparatus has been reduced almost two minutes. Hingham, Hall, Cohasset, and Norwell Fire especially were very closely together, and now when a major call comes in or an ambulance just needs another town, it's dispatched automatically at the same time. If the response is a Hingham engine and a Norwell ambulance, that call goes to Hingham and Norwell at the same time, thereby reducing response times and getting ambulances and equipment to your homes faster. Within the next three months, all the communities will be linked by a fiber optics cable. Again, increasing communications between the communities, eliminating-
You have one minute.
Regardless of whether Hingham participated in the Shrek or not, it was inevitable that costs would increase, and that was going to do, that was going to happen regardless of whether he joined or not. The reason I supported the concept for a combined dispatch center was to provide a better product for the citizens and improve the safety of our firefighters and police officers in the street. In my opinion, we've accomplished both. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Chief Perino? Our police chief?
Good evening. With all systems, mistakes can be made. Mistakes and complaints existed long before the Regional Dispatch Center even existed. Employees tend to resist change in early contract issues with the dispatch center, fed into safety issues. The managing board of this Regional Dispatch Center has worked hard to make the system work as efficient as possible. The proficiency has improved every year, and we continue to build on it, making it better. Technology has improved the service, and the police cruisers can respond to calls before they're even dispatched. They can view the dispatchers entering call information on the cruiser laptop and start responding to dispatch updates for the information. The medical aid calls are receiving EMD from dispatch, so the dedicated 911 operator can stay on the line with them directing the caller to what to do while another dispatcher sends the police and fire. We have continued to update and improve the technology and deliver a better service in the town, and without the Regional Dispatch, we would not have been able to get the $10 million that we have received. And in closing, the system is solid, and the citizens of Hingham and the other communities are safer under the Regional Dispatch Center than they were before. Thank you.
Is there a further debate on Item 240, dispatch services? If not, we come to vote on the recommended allocation of $813,750. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. That concludes the recommended action under Article VI. We now go to Article VII. Article VII asks, "Will the town appropriate a sum of money from the stabilization fund for the purpose of reducing the tax rate or act on anything related thereto?" The recommended motion is that the town appropriate the sum of $65,413 from the stabilization fund for the purpose of reducing the fiscal year 2016 tax rate. This by statute requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. The motion is adopted. Article VIII. Article VIII asks, "Will the town transfer from available funds a sum of money into the meals tax stabilization fund?" The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is that the town transfer the sum of $674,133.30 into the meals tax stabilization fund. This also by statute requires- It is a unanimous vote, the motion is adopted. Article IX. Will the town transfer from available funds a sum of money from the Meals Tax Stabilization Fund for purpose of reducing the FY 2016 tax rate? The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is that the town transfer the sum of $450,000 from the Meals Tax Stabilization Fund for the purpose of reducing the FY 2016 tax rate. This requires for adoption a two-thirds majority. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. Article X. Will the town appropriate from the receipts of the Hingham Municipal Lighting Plant money for the maintenance and operation of the plant? The recommended motion under Article X is that the, with the exception of $500,000, which is hereby transferred to the general fund to reduce the tax rate, that all funds received by the municipal lighting plant during FY 2015-16 be appropriated to said municipal light plant. All this is more particularly set forth in the recommended motion. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote. This requires for adoption a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote, the motion is adopted. Article XI is one that comes to us each year. It asks, will the town accept the provisions of the applicable Massachusetts law to establish and define the terms of a departmental revolving fund for the building department? The recommended motion is set forth in your warrant booklet, that the town authorize the continuation of the fund in the building department, and the amount that may be spent from the fund for fiscal 2013 shall be limited to $250,000. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote. This requires for adoption a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. Article XII. Another annual matter that comes before us as a town meeting. Will the town accept the applicable provisions of Massachusetts law so as to establish and define the terms of a departmental revolving fund for the Council on Aging? The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is set forth in your booklets, that the town authorize the continuation of a fund for the Department of Elder Services as referenced in the recommended motion, and that the amount that may be spent from the fund shall be limited to $60,000 during fiscal 2016. This requires for adoption a majority vote. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. Next, we come to Article XIII. Article XIII asks, will the town raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to the town's reserve fund for use during the fiscal year 2015, or anything related thereto? The recommended motion of your Advisory Committee is set forth in Article XIII in the supplemental report. Is there discussion? Is this correct? I just have a question for advisory. Is the reference to fiscal 2015 correct? Okay, yeah, thank you. So the recommended motion of your Advisory Committee is that the town transfer from available funds the sum of $1,656,180 to the town's reserve fund for use during this fiscal year 2015. So the sum of money, again, I'll read it, $1,656,180. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote. This is a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. Article XIV asks, will the town establish a fire station building committee for the purpose of overseeing the renovation of the North Fire Station, and raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds a sum of money for design and engineering services for the North Fire Station, Station Two renovations, or act on anything relating thereto? The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is on 29, and I will read it. That the town, one, establish a fire station building committee consisting of seven members, three citizens of the town to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen, three by the moderator, the seventh being the Fire Chief, or if the Fire Chief so designates the Deputy Fire Chief. The Chair of the committee will be elected from among its members. That the town appropriate $500,000 to be expended under the direction of this fire station building committee for design costs, including architectural and engineering services, as well as other professional fees for the renovation of the North Fire Station. To meet the appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said sum under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 21, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town for that purpose. Since this involves borrowing, it requires for its adoption, does this motion, a two-thirds majority? Is there discussion on this? Mr. Haskell? Mr. Haskell from the Advisory Committee.
My name's Eric Haskell. With my wife, I live at 183 High Street. It's my privilege to serve on the Advisory Committee, and I've been asked to speak tonight as to the Advisory Committee's reasons for unanimously recommending the recommended motion that you just heard on Article XIV. Thank you. And now, what we're speaking about in Article XIV tonight is the North Fire Station, also known as Number Two, also known as the Torrent Company. This is the one that's located on North Street, right behind the old West Hingham Pharmacy. It's currently the home to one engine unit and one ambulance unit. It was built in 1942 and really hasn't seen much upgrading since then, which I'm going to get to in more detail in just a moment. But for context, I want us to think a little bit about those two dates. 1942, Hingham was a very different place. The shipyard was just coming online, the ammunition depot, what's now Wamptuck State Park, was just coming online. Population of the town is about 8,000 people, and the fire department at that time was focused on the business of putting out fires. It meant that they had work to do, but it also meant that frankly, when North Station was open in 1942, it really didn't handle that many calls, or at least what we would think of as many calls these days. 2015, we have a snapshot of what the shipyard has become there. Hingham's changed a lot, population has multiplied by about three since then. The shipyard has changed a bit, and the fire department is still in the business of putting out fires, but these days, they do so much more. Like the chief spoke about a moment ago, the fire department gets involved with hazardous situations like building collapses, motor vehicle wrecks, they get involved with non-fire emergency management situations, and as you all know, the fire department also provides paramedic-level medical services through their two ambulances. It's a much larger workload, it's a much more varied workload than it used to be. The job's demanding, the job is extremely physical for the folks who do it, and it's also busier than it used to be. North Station last year handled more than 1,773 calls between the units that are stationed there. So this is the timeline about how this proposal has come to be where it is. Three years ago, this town meeting appropriated $25,000 to do a feasibility study on North Station. The Board of Selectmen appointed a fire asset review committee to hire an architect and do that work, which they've done, and now recommend that we go forward and fund the next stage, that is, design costs for the renovation of North Station. We are, let's go back, we are here. One thing that the asset committee studied and determined does not need to change at all, doesn't need improvement, is the location of North Station. Where it's situated between West Hingham and Hingham Square is actually at the intersection of a number of major roads, there we go, highlighted in red there, which is a good thing when you're dispatching fire trucks to have access to that sort of thing. What does need to change is the physical condition of the station. As I said, it's been minimally upgraded since 1942, and one important thing to remember about a fire station, perhaps unique among town buildings, is that the firefighters actually live there. There are four firefighters on duty at that station 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It's actually such that for better or for worse, the building as was built in 1942 doesn't have a lock on the front door, because there's always somebody there. I pointed out with the arrows here, a couple of things that are noteworthy about the living conditions, in addition to being cramped, kind of cinder block, small. The red arrows point to extension cords. You see a lot of them in North Station, because in 1942, there weren't that many power outlets, and that's how the firefighters have powered the necessities of modern-day life, is with extension cords. Similar, the yellow arrow points to cable television, that's how they get cable and internet, is by dropping it down through the ceiling. Most of the systems, all of the systems in North Station are still original. The picture that you see on your left is the men's room. There actually wasn't a women's room until they did a small project to add one about 15 years ago. What's noteworthy about the bathroom there is the original cast-iron radiator. The heat system hasn't been improved since 1942.
You have one minute.
Thank you. We'll expedite our tour of the station here. As I said, it's a physical job these days. The station doesn't have a fitness room, and the firefighters have worked creatively to find space for fitness equipment. Notice that above the elliptical, the ceiling is missing a panel, so that they can use the machine. There's a weight room in the, excuse me, there's a weight set in the shop room there, and the things highlighted in yellow, the detox station and the closet where the medical supplies are kept, were kind of wedged in there because those services weren't provided in 1942. They've used closets to store their turnout gear, files, and they hang their clothes to dry next to that big old boiler that hasn't been upgraded since 1942. So back to our timeline, what's on the table tonight is to approve $500,000 to fund the design costs. Construction costs will come a year from now, after the building committee has had the chance to do its work and work up a design for the renovation of this station, as we mentioned in our-
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Is there further discussion?
Based on my previous talk, I'm gonna have to talk a little faster. This is a story about a 73-year-old building. For some unknown reason, fire stations always seem to be last on the list to get attention. The role of the fire service has changed dramatically since the North Station was first occupied in 1942, and although our firefighters have risen to the occasion, the building has not. In addition to fighting fires, we now deal with hazardous materials, terrorism, technical rescue, social issues, advanced medical care, building collapses, water and rescue emergencies, just to name a few. The fire service is an organization steep in tradition, and we remain the one organization that when all else fails, call the fire department. Not only do we respond, but we strive to be there within five minutes or less. The fact remains, however, that the North Station has gone well beyond its useful life without any major upgrades. Most town employees work in their respective buildings. What makes a fire station different is that we live in the station, and that puts our needs and requirements on an entirely different scale. How many people here tonight have a heating system that's 73 years old? Electrical, plumbing, roofs, gutters that are 73 years old. We lack storage space, locker space, physical fitness accommodations, EMS storage, dormitory space, and proper ventilation. Also remember that the size of fire apparatus has increased almost 50%. To be quite honest with you, I think the vast majority of the people in this room tonight, if they were asked, or were told to live in that building, you wouldn't do it. The good news is the structural integrity of the building is good, and our recent independent survey has indicated that it is correctly located in the right location, as Eric alluded to. When the first station was first occupied, there were four firefighters assigned to two shifts. Now there are 16 firefighters assigned to four shifts. During storms and special situations, that has increased. Response volume has gone from 150 emergency calls per year to over 1,700 calls. I think the number's actually around 2,000. The North District has many of the town's oldest historic structures, and they themselves represent significant firefighting challenges. Fire stations are one of the very few town-owned buildings that are operated 24/7 and expected to be functional 24/7 regardless of all other considerations. When the weather gets nasty and everyone stays home, fire stations must continue to function. Many times during those types of events, fire stations are extremely busy. Firefighters are very good about maintaining, repairing, and providing upgrades when needed, and over the years, we have been able to keep our buildings functional. Fact remains, though, that what needs to be done has gone well beyond the capabilities of the firefighters. In my time, in the lifetime of the North Fire Station, I have witnessed the following: three town halls, one at 14 Main Street, one at 7 East Street, and the current one at 210 Central Street. Two libraries, one at 308 Main Street in Hingham Center, the current one at 66 Levitt Street, which after the town hall moved, was doubled in size. A light department, originally was in the DPW building on Hershey Street. In the 1960s, they moved to Cushing Street. They themselves had received, made a renovation and expansion, and now they're looking at a third location, and ground has been broken at Bearcove Park. DPW is now in a facility three times the size of where they were, on Hershey Street, and they were allowed to keep their old building for storage, which I think was a good thing. High school, built in the 1950s, two major additions and a major upgrade to the entire structure. Middle school, built in the 1960s, early 60s. Major addition in the mid-1990s, demolished and completely replaced. East school, basically the same thing. Foster School constructed in the 50s, two major renovations and classroom additions. Police station replaced in 1995. To put this in perspective, all of these buildings have been renovated more than once, some replaced more than once, and in some cases, some have been renovated and replaced more than once. In the 73 years of existence of the North Fire Station, nothing has been done to improve it. The time has come to do something, and the time is tonight. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? If not, we come to vote. Again, this is a two-thirds majority because it involves borrowing. All those in favor of the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee under Article 14, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote, the motion is adopted. Next, we come to Article 15. Article 15 is the Community Preservation Article, and we will follow for Article 15 the procedure that we began last year that is akin to what we follow for Article VI. There are 14 discrete recommended allocations of CPC funds, all gathered under Article 15, and the recommendations, these are the recommendations, of course, of the Community Preservation Committee. They have been shared by your Advisory Committee as well. So in order to expedite this, what I will do is I will read Article 15, and just abstract, the question posed, of course, is will the town appropriate sums of money for community preservation as follows? And then if you skip to the recommended motion, what I will do is I will read each one, and then- then if you want to hold one, as you would do for Article 6, you will call out hold, and we will then come to vote on all of the items that have not been held, and then return to any items that have been held. So, the recommended motion under Article 15, which consists of a number of parts, is that the town appropriate the following sums of money for community preservation purposes as follows. One, $37,500 from the Community Preservation General Fund for addition to the Community Preservation Committee's Administrative Fund. $100,000 from the Community Preservation Community Housing Reserve to be used by the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust for the trust's opportunity funding program. Three, $25,000 from the Community Preservation Community Housing Reserve to be used by the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust for additional funds needed for the Board of Selectmen's parcel development. Four, $28,068 from the Community Preservation Community Housing Reserve to be used by the Hingham Housing Authority for exterior repairs to the house located at 132 Scotland Street. Five, $88,931 from the Community Preservation General Fund to be used by Hingham Historical Archives Task Force for implementing the Hingham Historical Collections Master Plan. Five, $24,750 from the Community Preservation Historic Resources Reserve to be used by the Liberty Plain Cemetery Corporation to continue to restore and conserve veterans' markers and monuments within the Liberty Plain Cemetery located at 990 Main Street. Seven, $25,000 from the Community Preservation Historic Resources Reserve to be used by the Board of Selectmen to preserve the windows of the former Tree and Park Barn located at 8 Short Street. Eight, $34,393 from the Community Preservation Historic Resources Reserve, and $38,107 from the Community Preservation General Fund to be used for funding the rehabilitation of Building 52 located in Bear Cove Park and currently used by the Bear Cove Fire Museum. The hold on number eight. $20,000 from the Community Preservation General Fund to be used by the Hingham Congregational Church Association for the construction of a handicapped ramp at the Hingham Congregational Church located at 366 Main Street. Ten, $5,000 from the Community Preservation General Fund to be used by the Hingham Historical Commission for the preservation of a historic gazebo and the relocation of this gazebo to its probable original location on Ragged Island. Eleven, $58,695 from the Community Preservation General Fund to be used by the Board of Lincoln School Apartments for the replacement of the elevator located at 86 Central Street. Twelve, $30,000 from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve for deposit to the town's Conservation Fund for purchase of land, conservation restrictions for prior CPC land acquisitions, and capital improvements and expenses related to such acquisition, and to make deposits or down payments toward acquisitions or create, or creation of interest in open space or to otherwise preserve open space. Thirteen, $380,000 from the Community Preservation General Fund to be used by the Recreation Commission for the renovation and repurposing of the historic Courtyard Factory Barn Phase IV. And fourteen, $50,000 from the Community Preservation General Fund for the restoration of the South Shore Country Club Tennis Courts located at 274 South Street. So I note, we have had holds on item eight and item 10. So we come to vote on all of those items other than eight and 10. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Thank you. The ayes have it. We now come to the held matter, item eight, money for the Bear Cove Park property currently used by the Bear Cove Fire Museum. I invite the person who held the matter, if he or she wishes to come forward to speak. Mr. Hershey.
Yeah, good evening. My name is John Hershey. I've lived in town for 66 years now.
Speak good and loud, John, please.
Yeah, I'll have to hold it, I guess. I lived, I lived in town for 66 years now, 65 Hershey Street. I lived there with two cats and a dog. My question is, Bear Cove Park itself is under the control of the Selectmen here in Hingham, also the Bear Cove Park Committee, and the Department of Interior. My question is, do we have permission from the Department of Interior to use that building as such? It's a nonprofit organization, and the deed on that property states that Bear Cove Park will be used for park and recreations into perpetuity. That is forever. This is a nonprofit organization using the property, and I ask again, as I asked in December, in front of the Board of Selectmen, when the chairman of the CPC was there, I asked the question, do you have permission to use this building and spend the money there? And all I got was a red face. That's number one. Number two, there's a reversionary clause in the expenditures that you can spend with CPC money, and that is not allowed under CPC spending to use that money, 52, or 72,000. So those are the two questions I have. If there's permission, I just need a piece of paper to show it to me, and I'll pick it up later, and I don't believe it's allowed under CPC funding.
Thank you, Mr. Hershey. Let me resume your seat, Mr. Hershey.
Thank you, Mr. Monitorator. Gary Tondorf-Dick, 1029 Main Street. I'm the Planning Board representative to the CPC this year. I'd like to describe our efforts here on the CPC's efforts on the Bear Cove Fire Museum. The Bear Cove Fire Museum requests $72,500 to replace the roof of Building 2 at Bear Cove Park. Building 52 is owned by the town and leased to the museum, which uses it as a repair and restoration facility for the museum's collection of the antique fire apparatus and related historical memorabilia. The roof of this 98-year-old structure leased extensively, endangering both the building's interior and the building's collection. Building 52 is one of the last remaining ammunition magazine buildings from the former United States Naval Ammunition Depot, which was located in, in this area of Hingham, adjacent to the Weymouth Back River during much of the 20th century. The significance of this historically is, is that the Charlestown Navy Yard could not support the efforts in World War II for the shipping to support Europe, and thereby Hingham was looked at as a commensurate facility to which the Navy expanded. The federal government acquired the 900-acre site in 1903, and eventually constructed some 19, some 90 buildings for the Navy. The depot saw service in the First and Second World Wars. By 1945, approximately 2,400 civilian and military personnel were working there. Building 52 dates from 1917, and was used to store munitions that were sent to naval forces operating in the Atlantic during both World War II's and up until the Korean War. It is one of the few remaining buildings from the World War I era, making it an important reminder of this period of Hingham's history. The Hingham Historical Commission recently placed Building 52 on the town's inventory of historical assets. The United States decommissioned the depot in 1961, and 10 years later conveyed the property to the town, which named it, renamed it Bear Cove Park. In 1981, the town allowed the museum, under this document, to occupy Buildings 52 and 112. The building displays its collection in Building 112, which was restored with CPC funds in 2010. The collection includes several Hingham-specific pieces of antique fire apparatus, other firefighting equipment, and historically significant archival photos and documents, almost all of which are Hingham-specific. What's significant about this building is, is that it represents a key point in Hingham's history, both in World War I and World War II. It also represents a significance, a commitment to preserve Hingham's firefighting history into the, from the past, present, and into the future. Relative to the ownership of the building, this is all allowed in the transfer to the town in 1961 through 1971. Also, I think what is significant too, is, is that the CPC funds that are being requested for this roof restoration project are basically under the Historical Preservation category, which is one of the four significant categories that the statute allows CPC funds to be used for. In order to have that be a legitimate use of the CPC funds, we, we did a lot of research on the building with the, the Government Archives in Walthing, and we found that this building was very significant, one of five left of this period. It's the only one of the five that's never been touched, so it's in all original condition. And with the use of the Bear Cove Fire Museum in here, we can now facilitate the restoration of this building in addition to supporting a very significant cause in Hingham, and do it within the auspices of the community preservation funding. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. I recognize Susan Murphy, Real Estate Counsel for the town.
Susan Murphy, 11 Daly Road, Real Estate Counsel.
Right into the mic, please.
Sorry about that. Susan Murphy, 11 Daly Road, Real Estate Counsel. Um, I believe Mr. Tondorf-Dick spoke to the historical significance of the building. I'm gonna speak to the first question with respect to the Department of Interior. Quick background, the town acquired the property through a program called the Federal Lands to Parks Program in the 1970s, and so all of Bear Cove Park and surrounding areas and fields all came through deeds from the federal government. By virtue of those deeds, as Mr. Hershey referenced, there's various restrictions and oversight from the, through the Department of the Interior, which is administered through the National Park Service. The Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator's Office is in regular communications with the National Park Service with respect to those lands. We actually spoke to them, I met with their representative and the town administrator over the last several months, and they have a form of concession agreement that they require for any private users within these lands. And we have a form of concession agreement for the Fire Museum, which has been reviewed and approved by the National Park Service, and is just pending execution by the Fire Museum and the Board of Selectmen. So yes, the answer is it has been approved and is allowed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on item eight? If not, we come to vote. This requires for its adoption, a majority vote. All those in favor of the recommended motion under item eight, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. There was also a hold on item 10. I would invite the person who held item 10, or one of the people who held item 10, to speak to his or her rationale for holding that item.
Susan Earl, 18 Fresh River Avenue.
It's on, you just-
Okay. Susan Earl, 18 Fresh River Avenue.
Feel free to get it right up like an ice cream cone, right up there.
I have a hard time believing that a gazebo to be transferred to Ragged Island is worth the money to put into it to rebuild it. It will be open to the weather, it will probably get destroyed in the first big storm we have, and how many people will be over there using it? It just doesn't seem worth it to me. That's all.
Thank you. Is there a further discussion on item 10? Yes, sir.
Yes. Ron Hutchins, 30 Cliff Road. I'm in complete agreement with that lady there. I attended several of the CPC meetings, and all of these projects are excellent projects, even the one that I'm talking about now. The thing is, is about $5,000, I think appropriated for it, and her comments are almost what I am going to say. The location just doesn't make any sense. The, why couldn't it be put somewhere where more people are gonna see it? The only way you're gonna see this, if you have a boat, or if you can swim across to Ragged Island. The vandalism is going to happen because kids are gonna be out there, and kids love to vandalize stuff. We all know that. So when somebody comes to repair it, we're gonna have to go over there and repair it, and if worse comes to worse, we may need a fireboat, because once they start vandalizing it and having campfires, something is going to happen. So, as long as it's in put in a different location, I am all in favor of it, with some sort of plaque stating the significant historic significance of it by being part of Crow Point. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchins. Is there a further discussion on the recommended motion under item 10?
Jim Watson, 291 Rockland Street. I'll speak briefly, then I think Mike Dyer, who's the proponent, should speak and probably have more detail. We discussed the site, can you hear me? We discussed the site, we discussed the exposure. Thing was, there was no spot in the original Melville Gardens suitable for it. I mean, otherwise, that would be logical. We talked to the yacht club about land by the parking lot, and that, you know, where it would have been visible, and a little more easy to keep an eye on, but that really wasn't available. And on the positive side, the location in Ragged Island is very visible from Otis Street, is sort of diagonally across from the Harmony Cottage. If you know the delightful yellow building with a lot of bric-a-brac, that was the bandmaster's house doing Melville Gardens. So they sort of play off each other. Now, kids do, do do vandalism, you can't deny that, but it's such a visible sight that anybody driving by, T-bus, police car, ordinary person, could see kids out there, and the harmony master could respond. In, in terms of the related question of maintenance, the Harbor Islands Alliance has committed to coordinate and recruit people for maintenance. The Harbor, Friends of Hingham Harbor that Mike Dyer presides over, has about 100 people who are volunteers willing to work on it, and as I understand it, and Mike could better support this, the National Park Service has a program called Sundays for, what's the term? Stewardship, stewardship Sundays, where they have large numbers of skilled people who work in various park service projects, not just this, and they're already underway. And I think it's clear, the cost is gonna be more labor and attention than sheer dollars. So I think the maintenance can be managed, I think the visibility will protect it more than you might think. And by the way, I used to live in Otis Street, I know about swimming out to the islands, and you know, you can't deny that that's an issue, but there is plenty of surveillance. And thirdly, it's just, when you get down to it, a very inexpensive, very sort of delightful project. I'm, I'm just charmed at the imagination of the people that came up with it. And the gazebo by its nature is an outdoor structure, so rather than worrying about wind and rain, it was in the wind and rain for years before the park closed, I would just make sure that the right materials are used, that they're water-resistant, and that the follow-up maintenance stays on top of it. And I think it'll be great fun to go out there, swimming, wading, paddling in the town kayaks, or just enjoying it when you go by. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mike Dyer, 11 Planters Field Lane, Vice Chair, Hingham Historical Commission.
Mike Dyer, 11 Planters Field Lane, Vice Chair, Hingham Historical Commission. Let me obviously respect Mr. Watson, we thank you for teeing that up. In simplest terms, this project involves restoring a town-owned historical asset and returning it to public use in its historically accurate setting. Over a year ago, the Historical Commission was made aware of this gazebo's existence and worked to have it saved from a homeowner's backyard, where it had been outside in the elements for countless numbers of years. The gazebo's relatively small, it's a sturdy little structure, it's survived since the late 1800s, it's roughly 15 by 15 in size. It's currently in storage in the town warehouse. The Commission seeks, as has been noted, to return this back to where it originally was. A little bit of history and background on that, and why we're thinking Ragged Island. Late 1800s, roll back to Crow Point, you had two major tourist destinations out there. You had Downer Landing and the Rose Standish Hotel, basically in the site of today's yacht club, and you had Melville Garden at the intersections of Downer Landing and Otis Street. Ragged Island at that time was part of Melville Garden. And Melville Garden in and of itself was a lavish resort. It had restaurants, it had gazebos, it had, it even had bear pits, if you kind of can imagine this massive site over there. Out on Ragged Island, which was part of this, there was a restaurant, there was a pier, and there were several gazebos. If you look at a book that's available today, King's Handbook of Boston Harbor, published in 1882, which is full of hundreds of illustrations of different sites throughout Boston Harbor, one of such illustrations is of Ragged Island that happens to identify and clearly show a small gazebo with a conical-shaped roof with a round finial on top. This is the gazebo that we have in our warehouse today. As Jim alluded to, Ragged Island, which is now part of the Boston Harbor Islands National Park area. This includes World's End and the three other islands in Hingham Harbor. There are 29 other properties throughout Boston Harbor area that are part of this National Park Service area. The National Park Service is eager to develop a collaborative relationship with the town, and has been working with the harbor master and others to move forward in a way that can make the islands more accessible and work on this Ragged Island project. Few key points I'd just like to emphasize in summary. Ragged Island brings the gazebo home, back to Melville Garden where it originally was placed. We looked at other locations, and as Mr. Watson pointed out, there really is not for much public space left anymore in Crow Point. The Historical Commission saved it from destruction, and it needs an appropriate setting. We considered other settings on the mainland, but could not identify any perfect space for it. The gazebo will be visible from the mainland. Ragged Island, if you go out and take a look at it today, has a nice saddle out there where we're envisioning putting this. You'll be able to see it from downtown, from the neighboring communities. This will become a nice aesthetic element that will add to Hingham Harbor. The gazebo will be usable by kayakers, boaters, and promote use of Ragged Island, and help tell the story of Melville Garden. The gazebo forges an excellent alliance with the National Park Service and its nonprofit partners. Future maintenance, which obviously can be a concern when it comes to vandalism or other things like that, weather and elements, National Park Service operates a series of programs already on some of town property called Stewardship Saturdays, where they provide maintenance, training, equipment, boats, and everything necessary, and they've been doing work on Langley, World's End, Bumpkin Island, and the other islands throughout the harbor. This would be part of that inclusion. The project has received strong support from both the Board of Selectmen and most all of the advisory committee, and most of the project costs, in fact roughly two-thirds of them, are covered by the National Park Service or nonprofit partners. The ask of this is $5,000 to complete the project. Thank you.
Is there further discussion on this item? Yes. You need to come to a microphone and pose your question, so the meeting can hear it. It's okay, it's good exercise.
I just have a question. I was wondering...
You can identify yourself for the voter, please.
Leah Godfrey, Tucker's Lane, Hingham. I was wondering, you said your housing and it's being preserved, where the gazebo came from? What property? That's all, I'm just curious. There are only three left in Hingham, and I was just wondering where this one you found?
It actually came from a private residence on Elm Street. It had been relocated from Melville to Elm Street.
The answer is from a private residence on Elm Street.
I think this should really be reconsidered, since that was my residence, and it disappeared from my property.
A matter of provenance has been raised. I'm not sure that's in-town meeting time. Mr. Valterra. An unenviable position.
Victor Valterra, 25 Liberty Pole Road, for the majority of the advisory committee. I don't have a response to that question or comment. The advisory committee voted 12 to 1 in support of the proposed funding for the gazebo project, basically for the reasons outlined by Mr. Dyer. I want to emphasize just a couple of points. The town-owned, well, town-owned gazebo, maybe. One of the last few remaining structures from Melville Gardens, which was a very important part of Hingham's history in the late 19th century. So we feel it's appropriate to preserve the gazebo. Ragged Island, given its connection to Melville Gardens, is an appropriate place, we feel, particularly in light of the unavailability of any location on the mainland. While not accessible to non-boaters, a significant number of people nevertheless will have access to the gazebo, both people who own boats and people who rent kayaks through the town program or otherwise. The amount of CPC funds requested is modest. Most of the project cost, as you heard, being borne by the National Park Service and by the Hingham Historical Commission itself. And then most importantly, as has been pointed out, we believe that the project will foster the town's relationship with the National Park Service and the Boston Harbor Alliance. We're hoping that the project will activate Ragged Island, and by making it a destination for kayaks or the small craft and the like, and in the process, will foster the relationship with the park service. So for those reasons, the majority of the advisory committee supports the project as a desirable use of the CPC funds.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Yes. Ms. Earl. You're welcome, Ms. Earl, to use this microphone right down here, it's quite accessible.
Susan Earl, 18 Fresh River Avenue, Hingham. I have to say that if it was purloined, it should be returned to the person who owned it. If it was, if it was taken illegally from a residence, it should be returned to that residence. That's all I have to say.
Well, in that case, we need a police investigation from the state police.
Mr. Sharkansky from the advisory committee.
Jim Sharkansky, 32 Hancock Road, speaking for the minority of the advisory committee opposing this project, assuming we own the gazebo. Again, it's a privilege to talk before all of you tonight. I'm here to explain tonight why I voted against the reconstruction of the gazebo on an island in Boston Harbor, Hingham Harbor. First, I'll tell you that I have struggled with the community preservation tax, because it imposes additional tax on citizens. But tonight, we're not here to debate the merits and the faults of the CPC tax, or whether it should be remained in existence. Tonight, the CPC proposes spending $5,000 to build a gazebo on an island in a harbor. The location limits the accessibility to the gazebo. Those who have the availability of a boat or are strong swimmers may reach its shores. But even those people who have a boat will find the island difficult to reach, as there's no docking system to tie the boat to. Beaching a boat might not only be difficult, but expensive, as the island is surrounded by a sea bottom that is heavily populated with rocks. In addition to the location, limiting the accessibility of the gazebo, the New England seasons also limit the time available each year to visit this island. Most boaters remove their boats from the water by November and do not return to the water until possibly April. The winters here make travel in the harbor extremely difficult, as witnessed this past winter. The CPC has access to approximately a million dollars each year to apply to a variety of proposals. After spending the past four years listening to the presentations of the CPC to the advisory committee, I understand the overwhelming task of sorting through the proposals on their merit for the contributions. While I have reservations about this tax, I understand that the majority of the town supports it. Therefore, as a member of the advisory committee, I have approached each and every project that has come before me with an open mind, and have supported most of them. I do not support this particular project. I would rather if the town saved this money and applied it to projects that the CPC did not recommend for this year, such as the reconstruction, the reconstruction of the Crestfield Playground. I think this would have been better use of the CPC funds. Such a facility has greater accessibility to many more than the public, and gives much more joy and memories to many more people. If there is a doubt to this, then I invite you to speak to those who use the rehabilitated playground at the Bradley Woods neighborhood. I imagine that some of you are saying that this is only $5,000. In proportion to the funds available, it is a small amount, and compared to other projects in the past, it is also a small amount to spend. I understand the desire to maintain historic structures, however, I do not think that everything has the same historical value, and I don't, I do not think that every old structure needs to be saved. I think it's spending this money and all the, and all the other expenditures this town proposes, from the perspective of a man who works more than 50 hours a week at a full-time job, and then works four nights a week at a labor-intensive job for another 20 to 25 hours, that, so I can provide my family with a roof over their head in Hingham. $5,000 is a lot of money to me, requires a great deal of hard work. I believe that when the spending of this taxpayer money, no matter the amount, there should be scrutiny as how it is distributed. I suspect I am not alone in this, I'm not the lone resident in this perspective and thought. I oppose this project. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Curley?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bob Curley, 1 Griss Mill Lane, and I address the town meeting both as the Chair of the Historical Commission and the Chair of the Community Preservation Commission. First, to address the issue of provenance. The Historical Commission dealt with this after the sale of the property on Elm Street, at which time the gazebo was intact. After the sale of the property on Elm Street, there was an illegal demolition of a garage on the property without the appropriate approval from the Historical Commission. In conjunction with looking into the demolition of the garage, the gazebo was identified on the property as something that was in the process of about to be destroyed. So hopefully that addresses the question of provenance. The Historical Commission then took from the property owner, who was before the Historical Commission on multiple occasions for hearings, and there was never any question raised about her ownership of the gazebo. The gazebo has been stored, it's been the subject of half a dozen Historical Commission hearings, it's been a subject of CPC hearings throughout this year, and this is the first time that anyone has raised any question about the correct town ownership of this gazebo. So the gazebo then was the subject of CPC hearings throughout this year. It was inspected by Mr. Dyer in its place of storage. We've had input from any citizen who was concerned about it. We had the Director of the National Park Service come to speak to us, who viewed this project as a very important one in terms of fostering relations of the park service and the town of Hingham with respect to the use of the Harbor Islands, including those Harbor Islands owned by Hingham. And that is why the National Park Service and the Boston Harbor Alliance are contributing two-thirds of the funds for this project. I'm not going to repeat the points that were ably made by Mr. Dyer and Mr. Valterra. The selectmen unanimously approved this article. It is bringing a piece of Hingham's history that we don't want to lose, home to where it should be. Both the Historical Commission and the CPC looked at potential alternative locations. We think the problem of vandalism is probably less on the island. I know from the Historical Commission's viewpoint, every time the iron horse is cleaned, somebody labels it the next week, and it becomes a subject for cleaning again. So one of the places we thought about putting it was on the bathing beach. But we thought it would actually be subject to more potential vandalism in that location than on Ragged Island. Vandalism is a problem that, you know, we all face, but we thought this was the best location that will be seen by everybody. I know the Recreation Department is presently discussing this as a goal for its kayak rental program. It's a place that will get people out on the islands to sanctuary spots where they can picnic or otherwise enjoy our resources. So on behalf of both the Historical Commission and the Community Preservation Commission, I would urge your support of this article. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion that we've not already heard? If not, we come to vote on item 10, requires for adoption, a simple majority. All those in favor of the recommended motion of the advisory committee upon the recommendation of the Community Preservation Commission, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
The ayes clearly have a majority, the motion is passed. We now come to, thank you, we now come to Article 16. Article 16 relates to a proposed amendment to the town's bylaw, and I would like to help you through a typographical correction before we get to the substance of the matter. If you look at page 40 of your warrant booklet, on the left-hand side of the page, eight lines down, beginning with the word "key terms," "key terms comma," let me just read you the correction. It should say "key terms comma, including comma, but not limited to comma." So we have one missing comma and one misplaced comma. So there should be a comma after the word "including." There should not be a comma after the word "limited," but there should be a comma after the word "to." And then if you drop down to section 1, the fourth line of which begins with the word Massachusetts, Massachusetts General Laws, there should be a comma after the word "laws." So that is the correction. So Article 16 asks essentially whether the town will amend the general bylaws of the town to include the text that is before you, which effectively sets forth in certain detail what I'll call the attributes of the role of the town administrator. As the comment makes clear on page 38, right at the beginning, this article seeks to define the responsibilities and authority that could be delegated by the Board of Selectmen to the town administrator. This was developed by the Town Administrator Bylaw Committee, that was established by the Board of Selectmen, including one member appointed by the advisory committee in October of 2014. As is stated on page 39, the Board of Selectmen voted 3 to nothing unanimously in support of this article. The advisory committee also, by its unanimous vote, supports the motion that has been put before you for action. before you for action under this article. The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is that the town amend the general bylaws, first by renumbering existing Article A as Article 5A, amending Sections 1 and 2 of that renumbered 5A by substituting new Sections 1 and 2, and adding a new Article 5B as in boy, all as follows, and that text, which is quite long, and I will not read it aloud to you, goes on for many pages, and sets forth what would be a new addition to our town bylaw concerning the position of the town administrator. Is there discussion? Mr. Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Nelson Ross. I live at 18 Bradford Road. I'm speaking on behalf of the Town Administrator Bylaw Committee. Our committee was established by vote of our Board of Selectmen on October 16, 2014. Our charge was to bring to this town meeting a proposed local bylaw which provides a clear comprehensive statement of the role, responsibilities, and authority of the position of town administrator. Our town has not had such a statement in the past. The most recent government study committee and a prior government study committee recommended that this deficiency be rectified. The problems inherent in the absence of clarity with respect to the duties and powers of the town administrator are many and obvious. Confusion over roles leads to gaps in administration, promotes unnecessary misunderstandings and confrontations, leaves town employees and the public unsure of lines of authority and chain of command, and obscures accountability of elected and appointed officials. Without clarity, people of good faith, who may have differing views about how to exercise and allocate authority, may find themselves at loggerheads and subject to criticisms because expectations are unclear. It goes without saying that managing a town the size of Hingham requires experienced, knowledgeable, and very capable management, a professional administrator who has fiscal expertise, knowledge of applicable law, the ability to manage personnel, and many other competencies. Interestingly, the critical importance of a well-defined management role has been recognized by most of the 20 communities that Hingham uses for comparison purposes. Of the 20, we have information regarding 18 of them. Seven of the 18 have town managers under a charter or special act of the legislature. Five of the 18 have town administrators established under charters with well-defined town administrator powers. Two are cities. One has an executive director by local bylaw. The remaining three, including Hingham, have town administrators. We do not know how the roles of the other two towns were established or defined. The takeaway from this is that the other communities have recognized the importance of having a well-defined role for their chief administrative officer. Our committee approached its work without regard to who was the incumbent administrator, or who is the incumbent administrator, and who the incumbent selectmen are. Our sole focus was on the position of town administrator and what the role, responsibilities, and authority should be. We held 15 meetings. We met with knowledgeable people who provided valuable input. They included current and former selectmen, the current town administrator, and Charles Christello, a long-service and highly-regarded former town administrator. We met with the Chairman of the Advisory Committee and the Chair and a member of the town's most recent government study committee. We also met with a very knowledgeable consultant on matters of municipal governance. We studied pertinent laws, prior town meeting votes, representative charters, special acts, and bylaws from other communities. We studied the Hingham Government Study Reports and we reviewed other valuable materials. We held a session specifically to take comments from members of the public, and we held several deliberation meetings, all public meetings. We were fortunate. There existed a history of significant responsibilities and authority having been regularly assigned by our Board of Selectmen to Hingham Town Administrators. The bylaw you will be voting on, in essence, is a codification, a codification of the responsibilities and authority which has historically been assigned and carried out by our town administrators. In preparing the proposed bylaw, we were required to conform to the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 23A, the law under which a Hingham Town Administrator is appointed.
You have one minute.
This law, excuse me?
You have one minute.
This law specifies that Hingham Town Administrators carry out the will and mandates assigned them by the Board of Selectmen. Our town administrator has no inherent or independent authority of their own. The Board of Selectmen continues to be the chief executive officer of the town. The position of town administrator, as we have defined it, is distinct from a town manager. The proposed bylaw provides that if the Board of Selectmen votes not to assign or to withdraw or modify any of the responsibility or authority listed in Section 5B, the Board of Selectmen will report this to the town, together with an affirmation that all other responsibilities and authority listed in Section 5B continue to be assigned or delegated. As the moderator pointed out, this proposed article was voted by the Board of Selectmen unanimously to support it. The Advisory Committee voted unanimously to support it. We are confident that the proposed bylaw is the best possible local bylaw for Hingham at this time. We ask your support. Thank you.
Is there further debate? Mr. Piles?
Good evening, folks. I'm Tom Piles from 727 Main Street and speaking on behalf of the Advisory Committee. First, let me compliment the Bylaw Committee for their thorough and diligent work on this article. The town is indeed blessed to have so many talented volunteers who work on important issues for the town, and this is a very important issue for the town's consideration. We are grateful for the Board of Selectmen who elevated this issue at this time. You've heard from Nelson about the considerable effort put forth by the Bylaw Committee on this subject. The article was subsequently heard by the Board of Selectmen and fully vetted by the Advisory Committee. This article addresses the ever-growing and complex needs of the town's operations. After almost 25 years under management of an executive director, the tasks assigned to the town administrator have been evolved into the duties outlined in the proposed bylaw. It is evident to the Advisory Committee that the town now needs to clarify these responsibilities in order to ensure that the efficient workings of the administrative matters of the town. It is also evident that we need a skilled, professional executive to manage our day-to-day matters. To provide, the position is always filled with a top-notch candidate in the future. We need to codify the authority of the town administrator. The town deserves the very best pool of candidates when considering hiring a new town administrator. We need to have this bylaw in place to ensure that this occurs. Interestingly, we also will be in a better position to attract Board of Selectmen candidates when the Board of Selectmen are not unduly constrained by the day-to-day operations of the town. That is, the administrative matters need to be appropriately delegated to the town administrator. Again, the Advisory Committee unanimously voted in support of this article, as the Board of Selectmen do, and I urge you to affirmatively vote on this article. Thank you very much.
Is there further discussion of the recommended motion under Article 16? If not, we come to vote. This requires for its adoption a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. We now come to the first of a series of zoning articles, beginning with Article 17. Zoning articles by state law require for their adoption a two-thirds majority. Article 17 asks whether the town will amend the zoning bylaw of the town of Hingham by deleting Section Roman 4C8 in its entirety and replacing it with the text that is set forth in your warrant booklet. The Planning Board unanimously approved this article. It requires, as I have said, for its adoption, a two-thirds vote of town meeting. The text of the recommended vote is set forth at page 43 of your warrant booklet. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. The motion is adopted. Article 18 asks whether the town will amend the zoning bylaw of the town of Hingham as set forth in the recommended motion, which would essentially insert the words "and/or a professional civil engineer registered in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts." The comment makes clear that it's making refinements to the Hingham Flexible Residential Development and Residential Multi-Unit Developing Zoning Provisions, adding professional and civil engineers to the currently listed landscape architects as professionals who are able to prepare a preliminary FRD plan and otherwise adjust the zoning ordinance language on local preference for criteria for flexible residential development. All is more particularly set forth in your booklets. Is there discussion? This being a zoning item requires for adoption a two-thirds majority. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. It too is a unanimous vote. Article 19 asks whether the town will further amend the zoning bylaw as more particularly set forth. The comment, which is on page 44 of your booklets, makes clear that this article is intended to clarify special parking permit criteria as previously adopted at the 2001 town meeting. The Planning Board unanimously approved this article. The article by its nature, or the motion rather, requires a two-thirds vote of town meeting. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote on the recommended motion under Article 19. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. Article 20 proposes an additional amendment to the zoning bylaw. The comment makes clear at its beginning that the proposed amendment would exempt uses under Section Roman 3A 4.4. All is more particularly set forth in the booklet. The recommendation of the Advisory Committee is that the town amend the zoning bylaw as set forth and insert the words "except in the industrial park district" at the end of the description of the use. The Planning Board approved this article. It requires for adoption a two-thirds majority of town meeting. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote. All in favor of the recommended motion under Article 20, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It too is a unanimous vote. Article 21. Article 21 requires a little housekeeping. If you, let's see, it's easier for me to do it from the books that you have. If you go to page 47, right-hand, right-hand column under Romanette 3, that's III, line 3, beginning "Completion of the site work improvements," there should be a semicolon after the word "improvements." And then we'll start a new paragraph right after that semi so that the new paragraph will begin "said finding to be used in lieu of the special permit, etc." And then in that last line, it should read "Section I" in Roman 1 dash C period 2. So the 2 that currently in your booklet appears before notwithstanding should have been placed directly after the capital C, so that it would properly refer to the section of the zoning bylaw that we are amending, Roman 1 hyphen C period 2. And then that next paragraph, which begins with that lonely Arabic 2, would just begin "notwithstanding." So we'd strike the 2 that appears before notwithstanding, essentially move it up so that it's properly placed after the capital C, and it will read "notwithstanding the foregoing." Those changes, of course, are quite important because these motions, when you adopt them, become part of the zoning bylaw of the town of Hingham, so it's good that they be accurate. This amendment clarifies requirements for issuance of certificates of occupancy, and it was unanimously voted by the Planning Board, the Board of Appeals, and the Advisory Committee. It requires for its adoption a vote of two-thirds of town meeting. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It too is a unanimous vote. Zoning Article 22. Will the town amend the zoning bylaw? Comment shows that this proposed amendment would add public safety as a purpose of the personal wireless service section of the zoning bylaw, and increase the minimum setback for cell towers in order to create a safety fall zone equal to the proposed tower's height plus possible as-of-right future changes in height. The Planning Board, your Board of Appeals, and your Advisory Committee each voted unanimously in support of this article. It requires for adoption two-thirds majority. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a unanimous vote. Article 23. Article 23 just requires a little tweak in the recommended motion on page 49. I would invite you just in the, 1, 2, 3, the line one up from the bottom that begins "the town farm," and to mark the location of, if you could just insert after the word "of," "of each of," so that we'll read "and to mark the location of each of the three town almshouses." The Board of Selectmen and the Advisory Committee recommend favorable action on this article. The, of course, recommended motion as revised is quite brief, so I'll read it. "That the town transfer a sum not to exceed $20,000 from available funds to the Hingham Historical Commission to erect a monument to memorialize the citizens buried at the town farm and to mark the location of each of the three town almshouses." Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote on Article 23. It requires for its adoption a simple majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Article 24 asks, "Will the town transfer a sum of money from available funds to the Special Education Reserve Fund?" There is one phrase missing from the 1, 2, 3, the third paragraph of your comment, the second-to-last line of which begins "unbudgeted and/or extraordinary costs," if you could insert the words "that may." So we'll read "unbudgeted and/or extraordinary costs that may occur in the future." The recommended motion is that the town transfer $250,000 from available funds to the Special Education Reserve Fund. The Board of Selectmen and the Advisory Committee have voted unanimously in support of this article. It requires for its adoption a simple majority vote of the meeting. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. Article 25 asks, "Will the town accept the provisions of Mass. General Laws referenced therein so as to increase the maximum base on which a cost-of-living adjustment is calculated to $13,000?" This is inserted at the request of the Hingham Retirement Board. The Board of Selectmen and the Advisory Committee- The Board of Selectmen and the advisory committee have unanimously supported the passage of this article. The recommended motion is set forth in your booklets at page 50. Essentially says that the town accept the applicable provisions of mass law to increase the maximum base on which COLA adjustments are calculated to $13,000 and provide further-than-appropriations increase of $58,100 for fiscal year 2016 be approved and transferred from available funds to meet the FY 2016 obligation. This requires for adoption a majority vote. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. The motion is passed. Article 26 asks, "Will the town pursuant to MGL 8221 discontinue a public way?" The comment is self-explanatory. The 2008 annual town meeting approved a similar article. The recommendation is that the town pursuant to the applicable mass general law discontinue the following public ways: a portion of North Street and a portion of Station Street. All is as more particularly set forth in the recommended motion of advisory under Article 26. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote. All those in favor of the recommended motion under Article 26, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. Article 27. Article 27 asks, "Will the town authorize but not require the Board of Selectmen to dispose of a parcel of land formerly a portion of Station Street to be more particularly described for a minimum of $1 on such terms and conditions as the Board shall deem in the best interest of the town?" The recommended motion is set forth in your booklets because this requires, because this rather involves a transfer of real property, it requires for its adoption a two-thirds vote. Is there discussion on this? If not, we come to vote on the recommended motion under Article 27. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. Article 28 relates to the electronic voting. It asks whether the town will rescind the action that was taken under 21 of the warrant for the 2014 meeting. The recommended motion is that the town vote to rescind the action that was taken under Article 21 of the warrant for the 2014 meeting whereby $15,000 was transferred from available funds to supplement a previous appropriation of $5,000 for the purpose of conducting an electronic voting pilot program. And as you can see in the second paragraph of the comment, "The Electronic Voting Study Committee has determined that the cost to implement an e-voting system that would satisfy the needs and requirements of the town is at this time cost prohibitive. Therefore, the voting committee is recommending that the pilot not be conducted and that the unexpended cost be returned to the town." That is not, of course, to preclude us from considering this at a future date, but the recommendation of your Electronic Study, Voting Study Committee is that the matter not be pursued at this time and the funds that are unexpended, which is all but a very small sum, they were allocated $20,000. They are proposing to return $19,772.78 and to leave this for another day. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote on the recommended motion. Requires for its adoption a simple majority. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 29 asks whether the town will amend the wetlands protection bylaw. The recommended motion is set forth at page 52 of your warrant booklets. Is there discussion on the recommended motion of advisory under Article 29? If not, we come to vote on it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. Article 30. Article 30 relates to a citizen petition. It asks whether the town will raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money for civil engineering services to begin development of plans and specs for the Route 3A Rotary Summer Street corridor roadway improvements and costs incidental The one change to the recommended motion, which is set on page 53 of your warrant booklets, if you can strike the words "appropriate" or so that the recommended motion will read "that the town transfer from available funds and amount not to exceed $400,000." Is there discussion on the recommended motion under Article 30?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Deirdre Kavanaugh Anderson, 31 Old Colony Road. I was born and raised at this address and moved back with my husband and three children seven years ago. Article 30, Engineering Services for Route 3A Rotary and Summer Street, is a citizen's petition. This citizen's petition was brought forth from our Summer Street neighborhood group. Our neighborhood group was formed to advocate for safety issues on what has long been known as an unsafe corridor in our town. If you follow me clockwise through these photographs, you'll see what we're talking about. These are just a few of the accidents that have happened over the last several years. In the top right, a rollover accident, a sunny Sunday afternoon, a car accelerating up from the Rotary on Summer Street, crossed the median and hit that Jeep, causing it to flip over. The bottom, my friend Courtney and her three children hit head-on by a repeat drunk driver at the Summer Street Curve, 7:00 PM on a Tuesday night in February of 2009. And the top left, the accident that prompted our neighborhood group to say, "Enough is enough. We need to move forward with action on this road. Let's go to town meeting and ask for their support." A single car hopped the sidewalk, hit two telephone poles, 7:30 Monday morning, January 8th, the time that our children are going to the bus stop or heading off to Hingham High School. Our neighborhood and the town have long voiced concerns about this corridor. In fact, we were successful in getting Mastod in the summer of 2013 to do a safety audit. With that audit in hand, the time is now to commit the funds to begin the design process, to sit in a room with traffic engineers, and to figure out how to solve the safety issues that plague this corridor. And they are the Summer Street Curve, as we mentioned, the Summer Street road width, is Summer Street wide enough for four lanes of traffic, an adequate curve, and a safe The Rotary. The Rotary is virtually, has no lane markings. It has multiple entrances and exits. The Route 3A North Street intersection, or the Stars intersection, very poor signal and pedestrian visibility. In fact, both of these locations were identified by Mastod in 2013 as high-crash locations. When then-Governor Deval Patrick came to Hingham in the summer of 2009, the Rotary was described to him as a free-for-all. And despite phenomenal support from the Hingham Police Department, we are still plagued with issues of speed and alcohol. Alcohol debris litters this corridor. Outdated signals. Mastod identified that the North Street 3A signal and the Martins Lane/Summer Street intersection signal are both outdated. Utilities. Summer Street sidewalk is literally interrupted by light poles or utility boxes. Maintenance. Hingham DPW does their part with maintaining the Summer Street/Martins Lane intersection, but Mastod rarely plows the Summer Street sidewalk or cut brush. As a result, residents are cut off in both directions from access to downtown, the MBTA train station, and public space. All of these issues create a corridor in which there is simply no room for error. There's no room for vehicle error or driver error, and there's no room for pedestrian error. Traffic comes so close to the curb that it's dangerous for walkers, walkers with strollers, bicyclists, and the many Hingham athletes we see run up and down this hill. But if we can commit the funds now to begin safety improvements or the design process, we can explore all safety improvements. We have no foregone design solutions. We don't know what a safer Summer Street looks like. What we're asking for are the funds to begin that process so that all safety improvements can be explored. And if we do that now, we can do that in tandem with addressing environmental concerns. We can do that in tandem with the exciting harbor development plans our town has. And most importantly, if we can have that public input and begin this design process, which is a necessary prerequisite for state funding of a construction project, we will all have a say, and most importantly, we will increase safety for all of us. We are so grateful for the Board of Selectmen and the advisory committee unanimous support. We thank you for your consideration, and we ask for your support of Article 30.
Is there further discussion under the recommended motion under Article 30? If not, we come to vote. This requires for adoption a simple majority. All those in favor of the recommended motion under Article 30, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The majority has it. The motion is adopted. Next, we have Article 31. Article 31 asks whether the town will raise and appropriate available funds, a sum of money rather, for the engineering permitting and construction of a harbor walkway as described in the article. The recommended motion of advisory is set forth at page 54 of your booklet. The Board of Selectmen and the advisory committee both unanimously support this article, that the town transfer $827,000 from available funds for the engineering permitting and construction of a harbor walkway as described in the recommended motion, and also be the development of detailed engineering drawings for the repair, restoration, and reconstruction of four town-owned harbor wharves at Iron Horse Park, the POW MIA Mobile Station parcel, and Barnes 1 and Barnes 2. Is there discussion of the recommended motion under Article 31? Yes, sir.
Dennis Friedman, 445 Cushing Street. My only question is if we're going to be using funds accumulated from mooring fees, would this impact the next time we need to dredge the harbor?
Bill Reardon, 9 Steamboat Lane, Chairman of the Harbor Development Committee. A good question, Dennis, and thank you for asking it. I know there are multiple sources for activities on the waterfront and multiple uses, but in this instance, they are distinct. Mooring permits are set aside within the general fund for general use for harbor-related activities, whereas the dredging is largely from federal and state funds, but the town's portion is funded by an accumulation of excise taxes on boats and trailers, which is set aside specifically for our portion of harbor dredging.
Thank you. Further discussion? If not, we come to vote on the recommended motion under Article 31. It requires for its adoption a simple majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's a unanimous vote. Next, Article 32. Article 32 asks whether the town will authorize but not require the Board of Selectmen for consideration on such terms as the Board deems in the best interest of the town to enter into a long-term non-exclusive lease for the nonprofit organization for the operation of a sailing and rowing center on a portion of the land shown on Assessor's Map 51, Lot 58, and known as Barnes Wharf. One change in the comment, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, lines down beginning with the word "located at zero." Strike Otis, insert Summer. Zero Summer Street, Hingham. The Selectmen, as you'll see on page 55, by a vote of 2 to 0, recommend to you the motion before you. The advisory committee, by a vote of 10 to 4, also supported the recommended action under this article. Given its brevity, I'll read the recommended motion. "That the town authorize but not require the Board of Selectmen for consideration on such terms as it deems in the best interest of the town to enter into a long-term non-exclusive lease for a term not to exceed 30 years with a nonprofit organization for the operation of a sailing and rowing center on a portion of the land, on a portion of the parcel of land shown on Assessor's Map 51, Lot 58, and known as Barnes Wharf." Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote on the recommended motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Bill Wise. I'm a resident of Hingham at 10 Pope's Lane. The advisory committee met to discuss this article, and it generated quite a bit of discussion. You can see there are four of our members who are in the minority. The discussion revolved around the practical challenges of setting up a long-term lease with the Lincoln Sailing Club, the Maritime Center, and what the conditions would be of that lease so that at some point in the future, a citizen of the town would say, "What the heck were you thinking? Do you know we're not getting a fair return for that lease? Why would you do a 30-year lease and you haven't even considered all the issues that should be considered in a lease?" Well, it may sound to you like I'm arguing for the minority, but I'm not. I'm arguing for the majority. Because during that process, our advisory members brought up some very interesting points and significant points to be considered, but not by us. That's not what we're asked to do here. The advisory committee is not going to negotiate this lease. The advisory committee is just going to do one thing: recommend a vote that the Selectmen be authorized to negotiate, and if need, and if required, to enter into a lease for a period not to exceed 30 years. That's our role as an advisory committee. When the dust settled in our discussion, we realized that we looked at the Selectmen to make the best use of Hingham property for the benefit of all of us. And now, the Lincoln Sailing Club has been around for a long time. It taught me how to sail. Even one of their members pulled me out of the water when I sunk a boat out 25 years ago. She's back there. I won't name her so I won't embarrass her. But it's a great, it's a great facility, and we know, as an advisory committee, we know that the Selectmen, in the discharge of their responsibilities, will make the best deal for the town, something that we'll all be proud of when and if completed. So with that, on behalf of the majority members of the advisory committee, we recommend that this motion be accepted. Thank you, Mr. Wise.
Ms. Hancock for the minority voice of the advisory committee.
Lucy Hancock, 15 Amber Road, speaking for the advisory committee minority on this article. And thank you, Bill, for the introduction. The rationale for the minority position is as follows. If town meeting approves Article 32, nothing may happen right away, but the article authorizes the Board of Selectmen to enter into a long-term lease, the details of which are unknown at this time. The proposal is premature and too open-ended, although the comment contains some valid ideas regarding the lease structure. The town should not be tying up this property now for 30 years. We are uncomfortable giving the Board of Selectmen a blank check for that longer term with the harbor having so many moving pieces, especially at this time. We need to be very careful about We need to be very careful about the timing of all the proposed harbor-related projects, such as the bathing beach improvements, the wharf review and repair, possible boat ramp rehabilitation, the Route 3A Rotary/Summer Street changes, and the potential purchase of a marina. It seems that the Barnes Wharf article is somewhat dependent on Articles 30, Route 3A Rotary/Summer Street, and 31, Harbor Improvements, which you both just passed. A big project on Barnes Wharf could worsen current traffic safety problems in the area. Improvements to Route 3A and the Rotary will greatly improve access to Barnes Wharf, and also create more options for parking there, but road changes may be several years in the future. At the very least, it would be helpful to know the structure of the road changes before a redesigned center is built on the wharf. The town should evaluate the condition of Barnes Wharf before encouraging the Lincoln Maritime Center to build a new and costly structure there. If wharf repairs are necessary, they may be expensive, and they may not be completed for a few years. The Harbor Task Force was recently reconstituted. This group should oversee all harbor development projects. Advisory Committee members who oppose this article do not want Lincoln Maritime Center to lose its short-term lease on Barnes Wharf. I repeat, our position is not anti-LMC. If Town Meeting does not approve Article 32 tonight, the Board of Selectmen has the ability to issue annual licenses to the Lincoln Maritime Center if the lease expires before a long-term lease arrangement is in place. Proponents can bring the Barnes Wharf lease back to Town Meeting as soon as next year. There's no two-year limit on returning. If and when a long-term lease is created, it should be structured very carefully by an attorney experienced in maritime transactions. It makes sense that the less-see would want a long-term lease in order to justify the investment in the construction and renovations of site facilities. The town, however, might be better off with a short-term renewable lease or a long-term lease with the option to adjust the rent payment periodically. Neither of these were suggested in the actual recommended motion. Given that the town could cede economic control of the property for up to 30 years, the Advisory Committee suggested, in the comment for this article, that the lease incorporate specific performance and control milestones, and include a periodic reassessment of the base rent as a function of the economic success of the center. The Advisory Committee minority is in agreement with these ideas.
Irma Lauder, 12 Liberty Road, for the Board of Selectmen, and I will be brief. We respectfully request your favorable action on this warrant article. The Board of Selectmen voted in support of the article. Hingham has been a maritime community since it was founded as Bear Cove in 1635. We have one of the last pristine village-like harbors. Hingamites would like to keep the harbor as an inviting place for everyone. In the 2014 Harbor Master Plan Survey, 89% responded that Hingham's location by the water was a top strength. The town issued an RFP for a Maritime Center on Barnes Wharf in late 2014. Lincoln Maritime, the sole respondent, was awarded the RFP. Lease discussions are in progress and look to be finalized soon. Lincoln Maritime has been a jewel of this town for over 45 years. It is supported wholly by private donations and provides rowing and sailing instruction for young people and adults. Our high school rowing and sailing teams operate out of LMC, as does the Special Needs Athletic Partnership SNAP Adaptive Rowing Programs. The LMC programs and our high school programs have grown over the years, and a new facility is a must. The rowing programs produce more college scholarships than any other sport. Today, there is no overwinter storage available anywhere in town for the expensive equipment that is purchased by private funds and then donated to the town. There is also no sewer on the wharf. Our children use porta-potties, as well as water brought in, or they use a garden hose. The new Maritime Center will be built over a number of years exclusively with private funds, and more importantly, maintained by private funds. The proposed lease will see, over the approximately 30 years, an investment of $3 to $5 million. This is about $150,000 a year as the center takes shape. The length of the lease is necessary to ensure donors are willing to make significant commitments of resources, and a 30-year lease is very typical for a project of this size and scope. Some people have expressed a concern about the seawalls and the wharf itself. The warrant article the town has just voted favorably upon will provide engineering money to assess the condition of each wharf and its accompanying seawalls. Barnes will be the first one done, well before any major work happens for the new Maritime Center. It should, however, be noted that LMC and its design team believe that the facility renovations can take place without any significant seawall improvements, because the proposed boathouse will rest on its own pilings. More importantly, however, those are issues that will be addressed in the full permitting process that will not be cut short by this warrant article. People have also expressed concern about the Rotary and Summer Street project. We've reviewed this, and both projects can exist in parallel with positive outcomes for each. The lease is designed to protect the town and the Maritime Center. We'll call for periodic reassessments of base rent and operational issues. Project progress will be monitored and reviewed. All review meetings will be done in open meetings. Today, the Curtis Pavilion is used by many community groups: the Rotary Club, Citizens' Police Academy, High School Rowing Association. The new center will provide year-round facilities and expanded usage by community groups and schools for educational purposes. It will also create a training space for the off-season for the high school. I respectfully ask you to join with the Board of Selectmen and vote favorably on warrant Article 32, the Barnes Wharf lease. Thank you.[1242.75][1242.75](APPLAUSE).
Good evening. Richard Padone, 12 Newtown Drive. I'm the president of the Lincoln Maritime Center. I've been on the board for approximately six years. Like all other board members, I'm a volunteer. Discussions with the Selectmen concerning the need for Lincoln Maritime Center to have a long-term lease have been going on for years. This past fall, Mr. Alexiades, on behalf of the Selectmen, issued a request for proposals for parties to respond to, to lay out what could happen on the pier, how the project would be built. They demanded design drawings and specifications. A team with Lincoln put together a response. It's over 100 pages long, it's been available on our website for over a month now, and submitted to the Selectmen in December, that provides great detail concerning the thought process. Most importantly, we are able to build a boathouse structure going out towards the water from the existing facility without the need for any modifications. The way I describe this structure is we are taking all of the ugly things that we are currently storing outside, and the kids will be able to move into this structure in a facility that goes towards the water and provides better access without any substantial change in programming, intensity of use, until traffic problems can be solved, but are a better place for our kids, with bathrooms, classroom space for them to get out of the thunderstorms. For those of you who don't know, LMC is a charitable organization. We're a 501(c)(3) corporation, and we've existed for 40 years. All of us as volunteers are committed to the mission of LMC, which is to provide opportunities for all of the public, but in particular, the children of Hingham, to get out in the water, enjoy the water, get to the islands, and learn maritime education opportunities. Thanks to DJ McKinnon and others, we have a group of people ready to raise the funds to make this happen in a phased process over the next several years. That may not be the case in the future. It certainly wasn't the case in 2008, when we were in a different economy. We served approximately 350 children last summer, in addition, 150 kids from the high school, and over 200 adults came down and used the programs. We're ready to move this process forward today. We believe it can be done in a safe and efficient manner, providing tremendous benefit to the town, at no cost to the town. We will maintain the property throughout the lease. The lease will require that, and at the end of the lease, if it's not renewed, the town will be left with a beautiful facility that's been approved through the planning process. I appreciate your support. Thank you.[1407.33][1407.33](APPLAUSE).
Is there additional discussion? If not, we come to vote on the recommended motion under Article 32. It requires for adoption a simple majority. All those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, "no."
No.
The ayes obviously have it. The majority carries. The motion is adopted. Next, we go on to Article 33. Article 33 asks, "Will the town raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds a sum of money to acquire by eminent domain or otherwise a parcel of land located at 26 Summer Street?" As you will see, the printed warrant booklet said that the recommendation of advisory would be made at Town Meeting. The supplemental report, they're true to their word. The recommendation is that the matter contained in Article 33 be referred to the Board of Selectmen for further study, and the Selectmen are instructed to report on the matter at the next Town Meeting. So this is a so-called motion to refer back to the Board of Selectmen for further study and a request for an instruction that they report next year. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote. It's a simple majority. All in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, "no." It's a unanimous vote. Article 34. Article 34 asks, "Will the town, pursuant to applicable mass law, transfer the care, custody, management, and control of a parcel of land and the improvements thereon, known and numbered as 308 Cushing Street?" It's the Light Plant Building. You'll see in the comment that the purpose of the article is to transfer the property at 308 Cushing to the Board of Selectmen, when 60 days of the Light Plant receiving a temporary certificate of occupancy at its new facility. The recommended motion of advisory is set forth in your booklets. It requires for its adoption a two-thirds majority, as it involves a transfer of real property. Is there discussion on the recommended motion under Article 34? If not, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, "no." It's a unanimous vote. Article 35 asks, "Will the town authorize the school department to enter into a lease of up to five years for the purpose of leasing new school buses used for regular transportation?" The recommended motion of advisory is that the town so authorize the school department to enter into the five-year lease for new buses used for regular school transportation. It requires for its adoption. Does the recommended motion under 35 a simple majority? Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Opposed, "no." It's a unanimous vote. Article 36. Article 36 asks, "Will the town transfer a sum of money from Receipts Reserve for Appropriation Fund, from the Receipts Reserve for Appropriation Fund, insurance recovery in excess of $20,000 to be used by the school department?" The comment makes clear, and we see this each year, that Massachusetts general laws requires the expenditure of insurance recoveries in excess of $20,000 to be subject to a vote of Town Meeting prior to final expenditure. So this is a requirement of mass law. The Advisory Committee warned us that it would make its recommendation at Town Meeting, and it has done so. It's in their supplemental report. It has one change, which I'll read to you. It's a very simple change, both in the comment and the recommended motion. The correct figure should be 109,00109086, as opposed to 114086. So in the text of your comment, insert 109086. Similarly, in the text of the recommended motion, so that the recommended motion will say that the town transfer $109,086 from the Receipts Reserve for Appropriation Fund, insurance recovery in excess of $20,000 for use by the school department for the initial stabilization and safety repairs to the Plymouth River School roof. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote. Again, a simple majority. All those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
All opposed, "no." Article 37 is an annual matter we see before us. It asks, "Will the town authorize, but not require, the Board of Selectmen to accept grants of easements for streets, water, drainage, sewer, and utility purposes, or any public purpose on terms and conditions the Board deems in the best interest of the town?" The recommended vote essentially follows the pattern of the article itself. The town authorize, but not require, through April 30, 2016, the Board to accept grants and easements as stated above. This requires for its adoption a simple majority. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote on the recommended motion under Article 37. All in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
All opposed, "no." It's a majority vote. I would invite at this point a motion that the 2015 Annual Town Meeting of the Town of Hingham be dissolved. I think I heard a second. Regrettably, this motion is not debatable. We now come to vote on the motion to dissolve this year's annual meeting. All those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, "no." It is a unanimous vote.[1780.33][1780.33](APPLAUSE).[1781.33]